All right, Russell roll call please.
Mayor McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Schroder.
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Okay, if we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I want to, if I could, I want to recognize Vice Mayor Carol Hatton from Davie, if you'd please stand up and be recognized. She's here visiting tonight, so thank you very much for coming out. All right. Keith?
Anything else special you want to say?
No, no, Mayor, we're up to public comment, the rules of public. Oh, sorry.
Caffer.
Caffer, sorry. I thought you were talking to me. He messed me up.
Sorry about that.
No, Russell messed me up, it's okay.
He likes to do that.
Yeah, okay.
All right, Marty, you're up to bat.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, as well as all the residents of the town of Southwest Ranches. For the record, my name is Martin Sherwood, your town financial administrator. Tonight is the presentation of your comprehensive annual report for the fiscal year 2018. Before I formally introduce Mo Areza, CPA and Senior Manager, who is here from the independent accounting firm of Markham LLP, I am pleased to provide you all with the comprehensive annual financial report. This is the town's fiscal year 2018 Caffer, which is the 12th consecutive Caffer prepared since 2007, and the 13th overall since the town's inception. I have a few copies with me tonight, should anyone wish to review, they're up by the town clerk. And the Caffer is always available in the town hall at the front reception desk, or it will be available for download, which is comprised all 113 pages directly from the town's website. Specifically, I'd like to cover a few key favorable financial highlights that I wish to report on. The first is the independent auditor's report, which Mo will elaborate more later on during his presentation. It reflects an unmodified, also known as clean audit opinion, which is the highest assurance given that the town's financial statements were prepared in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. An unmodified audit opinion gives comfort to you all, the town council, and the citizens of our community, that the town's finances are being maintained and accounted for properly. A second favorable item, which if you'd like to refer to page 95 of page 234 of your agenda package, is the total change in the unassigned fund balance. That was otherwise formerly known as reserves. For the general fund, has increased $85,237. And that increase went from $2,704,947 to $2,790,184. And I am happy and pleased to report that this occurred even with the financial impact from the effects of Hurricane Irma, which occurred back on September 10, 2017. And it's important to mention that the general fund fund balance, which I previously mentioned, the $2,790,184, represent 23% of total general fund expenditures and net transfers for 2018. Therefore, the town continues to exceed the minimum unassigned standard benchmark as recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association of up to 16.7% or two months of working capital. Number three is the total, town's total government-wide asset, which includes all funds townwide, the governmental and enterprise solid waste fund. This can be found on page 84 of 234 of your agenda package. And the assets exceed its liabilities by $51,261,122. This analysis is comparable to a balance sheet in the private sector, and obviously we are in a surplus net government-wide position overall. A fourth item during fiscal year 2018, I would like to once again congratulate and acknowledge all the town staff in attendance tonight. And I'm going to ask you all to stand, all the town employees, come on, please stand standing. Robert, Julio, Emily, the ones Rod, our town engineer, who else? Jeff, Jeff, Jeff's part of it, is planning. Thank you all, because they once again finished the year in a conservative and fiscally responsible manner that created a net positive increase in net position in the total of the town's governmental funds, in the amount of $786,422. And this is the eighth consecutive year of a positive increase in the governmental fund types. Now remember, we had a hurricane, so that is a tremendous accomplishment. Finally, we are also proud to report for the sixth straight fiscal year that the independent auditors' report on internal controls and the management letter, in accordance with the rules of the Auditor General of the State of Florida, and compliance with Section 218.415 Florida statutes, identify no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. Now, let me introduce and welcome your next presenter from Markham LLP. Mo Areza is a Senior Manager in the firm's Assurance Division. He has almost two decades of experience in the accounting profession, providing accounting, assurance, and advisory services to a wide range of clients. Much of his client base includes not-for-profit organizations, local governments, employee benefit plans, manufacturing companies, and retail entities. Mo is involved in all phases of the audit process, from planning and initial risk assessment to ensuring compliance with all state and federal laws, and the preparation and review of financial statements. He is a qualified peer reviewer and regularly performs peer reviews under the AICPA Peer Review Program. Long story short, this, Mo, generally, he instructs auditors how to audit. So that's a big, big responsibility. With, I'm all done introducing them, come on up, give me your presentation. Thank you, Mo, for being here tonight.
Thank you, Marty. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Town Council, and the Town Administrator. As Marty mentioned, my name is Mo Areza, and I'm with Markham LLP. We served as the external auditor for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2018. In front of you, you might have the comprehensive annual financial report. It's about nearly 100 pages, so I'm only going to point out certain pages and try to go as brief as I can and answer any questions you may have. If you turn with me to page one, you'll find our independent auditor's report. It has our title called Independent Auditor Report, and it starts on page one, and it goes through page three. On page one, which is our cover page of our conclusion, the first paragraph mentions report on financial statements. That paragraph details what we've audited, and it makes reference to the statements that we've audited and the fact that it covers fiscal year ended September 30, 2018. The second paragraph titled Management Responsibility dictates what management is responsible for. Management is responsible for putting together this Caffer and following US GAAP, which is United States Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. The third paragraph mentions what we, as your external financial auditor, Markham, is responsible for. We're responsible to audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and because we are in the state of Florida, under Florida statute, we're required to audit in accordance with government auditing standards. So we said, we follow two sets of standards which make it more rigorous. On page two, you'll find the most important paragraph in our auditor's report, which is titled Opinions. The reason it's opinions with plural is because we do audit every individual fund in its entirety. And it reads as follows, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly non-material respects, the financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remain the fund information." For the Town of Southwest Ranches, for the year ended September 30, 2018. This is a clean opinion. It's the highest regard that one could receive in regards to a financial statement audit. As the town council, this is the only opinion you want to be associated with. So you should be very proud of not only the town, but also your finance department for receiving such a high regard and for being able to produce this audit and complete this audit and this Caffer prior to March, and being able to submit for the GFOA standard of excellence. So congratulations. If you follow with me after page three, you have a section titled Management and Discussion and Analysis. That starts in page four, and it takes you all the way to page 14. Like I mentioned previously, this document is 100 pages, and if you were to read a section in the document from beginning to end, it will be these 14, these 10 pages, pages four to 14. The reason this is the critical, so critical section is because it not only dictates the monetary changes from prior year to current year, but it also provides an explanation and justification of what caused those changes. Not only actual versus actual, but also construing actual versus budget, which was approved by US Town Council. The last section that I'm going to mention is the reporting section that starts on page 84, that takes you to page 88. Under government auditing standards, which are a requirement by Florida statute, we're supposed to, we're required to review internal controls or financial reporting, and also test compliance with grants, contracts, and Florida statute requirements with 218. And if we come across any significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, or noncompliance, we're required to report to you in writing. And I'm pleased to mention the fact that at this moment, we have no findings or audit issues to report to you at this time. The last document that we do provide is the Communication to Those Charged with Governance. It's a separate document that would summarize our audit results and any disagreements we had with the town's finance department or any issues in completing our audit. Our audit is performed exclusively in a paperless manner. We provided the finance department a number of requests, and they had to be provided in a paperless manner, and also submitted electronically to us. We had no issue, it was a pleasure working with Marty and his team. I want to thank them for allowing us to be of service to, allowing, for, I want to thank them and you for allowing us to be of service to the town. And I also want to thank them for making our job a little easier by providing our requests not only correct and accurate, but also in a timely manner. That concludes my presentation. I don't know if you have any questions regarding the Caffer or what's being presented to you here today. Yes, sir.
Bob?
A favorable opinion and no material deficiencies.
And no significant deficiencies and no compliance issues.
So we can't ask for more than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Marty, it's a direct reflection on you and the team, what a great job you guys have done. I know Steve used to talk about it, and I'll talk about it, our first couple of years, we had lengthy opinions, and we had a lot of material deficiencies, but we're way past that, and that's a credit to the team. Thank you, Mr. Areza.
Now, it is recommended that the town council introduce, then accept via a motion, the comprehensive annual financial report as audited by our independent external auditors, Markham, for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2018, including the Communications to Those Charged with Governance letter dated March 20, 2019.
I motion what he just said.
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Back to the council. Any other questions?
No.
Good, call the question.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Marty, absolute great job, you and your team. Deserve all the accolades, yes.
Mayor McKay.
Yes, and thank you, what a stupendous job.
Motion passes.
Mayor, on the agenda, quasi judicial is next. It's not 9:00 PM yet, so we're going to have to wait five minutes before proceeding. Item four, as anyone knows from the prior meeting, has been pulled from the agenda because the LPA denied it. Item five is being asked to be tabled to April 11, 2019 at 7:00 PM. So at this time, Mayor, we can go to public comment, there are not that many.
Speaker.
Yeah, well, we'll come back when we read in the rules of quasi. Russell's asking if we could just have a motion for the tabling on number five for the record.
I make a motion.
Second.
Dee made it, Bob seconded it.
Thank you.
Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Yes.
Mayor McKay.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, we have only four public comment cards, public comments limited to three minutes per speaker. You cannot speak on any agenda items, so two speakers wrote that they wanted to speak on agenda items, so we pulled them, but if they want to speak on agenda items, just let us know, and we'll put you back in the mix. So based on this, it's David Sears, Newell Hollingsworth, Joan Kenny, who we're not sure if wants to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, and Cecil Grow, who again, not sure what he wants to speak on either. And final speaker is Debbie Green. David?
Thank you.
Good evening, David Sears, 5000 Southwest 201 Terrace. Where did everybody go? You want to know where they went? They don't care about the ranches, and they don't, because they only care about themselves. This right here shows you, they don't care about this council, only themselves. Wait till you try to put it on 27, and the real crowd will come. Okay? Two lanes. It'll be four. And now you're affecting people's property values over there. We already have the traffic from the churches. Okay? You'll never make everybody happy, but remember, our taxes will continue to rise. And are you going to say then, no council members, you're not going to allow our taxes to rise, when the millage rate raises up? Because they're going to be up here beating on every single one of you for their taxes being too high. That's the only time this place gets busy. Okay? The streets will never get paid. They'll never get paved. Why? Because we don't have the tax base that commercial properties would help us have. Okay? And then, I don't know if it could happen, we can get sued because we don't maintain our roads, and they become dirt again. When the taxes rise, agricultural exemptions will win, because nobody will be able to afford to live in Southwest Ranches. Remember that, each and every one of you. If you don't get some commercial in here, we will not be able to survive. Everybody knows it's sitting up there. Nobody sees the big picture. You've got to have some commercial properties out here. And Bob, you live two blocks away from me. You leave sometimes and have to wait how long to take a right-hand turn off of your street to get on Griffin Road when that church lets out? 15 minutes sometimes? No? I'll take a video of it, and then you can call me a liar. Good night.
I didn't call you a liar.
All right, Newell Hollingsworth?
Good evening, Newell Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I ate my bag of popcorn outside while you were having your fun in here. Anyway, two things. One is that the gates on 202 are being broken continuously now, and we need to do something to deter whoever's pushing it open or ramming it, and leave that up to the administration cameras or whatever. Anyway, the other thing is something that has been percolating, and I guess hasn't taken place, and that is the cameras on Griffin Road at the trail crossings. And we had a discussion on that, and supposedly Broward County agreed to put the, put them in, et cetera, et cetera. But do we need to have another horse killed and riders injured before this takes place? Can we please get some motivation on the part of Broward County and the town to put all of the lights on the trail crossings across Griffin Road before another terrible accident happens? And we see that all the time happening, where I have stopped waiting for the horses to go across, and the cars just keep coming and coming and coming, whether I'm going east or west, that's the other direction. And they're, they're sitting there with their hands up, please stop, please stop, and they just keep on coming, until finally someone who lives here and has animals stops, and then they start the horns. That they, we have stopped in the middle of the road, and we're denying them passage on Griffin Road at 45-plus. So, let's get some motivation. Light a fire somewhere. Thank you.
Joan Kenny, are you speaking about a non-agenda item?
I don't know, we can use the numbers, not big words, like is the Red Barn?
The Red Barn is on the agenda, sorry if we confused you. Okay. No, it's on the agenda, so you can't speak about it now. When it comes up. Cecil Grow. Okay, big words also. Debbie Green.
Debbie Green, I'm actually speaking on behalf of the young man from the Sikh Society, the Sikh temple, who sat here for about an hour and 45 minutes, and I told him I'd be happy to share his message again with everyone. So this is from his perspective, not mine. Greetings, Town of Southwest Ranches, council and townspeople present here today. On behalf of the Sikh Society of Florida, we would like to invite all of you to our first annual Race for Unity and Diversity 5K event. It will be held at the Sikh Society of Florida Temple this Saturday, March 30, at 7:30 AM. The purpose of the event is to promote awareness and acceptance within our community, all while supporting a healthy lifestyle. With the event just two days away, we wanted to let you know just how much support we have behind our initiative. We have 350 runners as of right now, and that number is rapidly climbing. Local businesses and organizations such as the Indian Regional and Cultural Center, the NUR Center, South Florida Hindu Temple, the New Hope Church, Sunshine Kids Club, Temple Beth Emmett, and Publix, that's just to name a few, have all shown outpouring support, and we cannot be more grateful. And of course, the town has provided an immeasurable amount of help in making this event possible, and we greatly appreciate your help as well. All in all, we have garnered support from a large portion of the community around us, and we want all of you to voice your support by coming out and inviting your family and friends to this 5K. We want to be able to benefit the town scholarship fund in an unprecedented way, and we need all the help we can to make that possible. Being the first of its kind in the greater Fort Lauderdale area, we could not be more excited, and we hope you are too. We hope to see you all this Saturday at the first annual Race for Unity and Diversity 5K Walk Run. Thank you. And for anyone, I have flyers here, and there's a barcode on here, so if you want to join, you just scan the barcode, it takes you right to the registration page. And, yeah, all the proceeds are going to the town scholarship fund.
Debbie, do you want to say something about the coins?
I was, I was going to say, if you let me say one more thing else.
Go ahead.
And then the Education Advisory Board is also selling their Town of Southwest Ranches collector's coins. They're $15 each, and they're challenge coins, collector challenge coins. So I also have some of those with me here, if anyone has any interest, they're $15, and it, all the proceeds of that goes to the scholarship fund. Thanks. Hope to see y'all on Saturday.
Thanks, Debbie. Mayor, it's now after 9:00 PM, so we can commence the quasi judicial hearing.
Okay.
As we had mentioned, the, we're down to one quasi judicial item tonight on the agenda, which is item six, and in a minute, Russell will read it into the record. As the council knows, certain times the council serves in a legislative capacity in which they make decisions on behalf of the town, dealing with policy decisions, such as the one earlier today. In other occasions, you're acting as judges, listening to a set of facts, and making a determination based on the legal standard of competent substantial evidence. Before you tonight is one item that Russell will read into the record. Well, that's where in our, everyone to the proceeding and commence. Russell?
This is item six, which is an appeal of the town administrator's denial of an application for relief pursuant to Town of Southwest Ranches Code Section 155-070 Existing Structures. If anyone plans on testifying tonight, if you would please stand up and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you, Russell, if you could read the item into the agenda.
I did.
Oh, you did, that was it. It was just a snippet. Applicants' Council, I don't know which one's going to be speaking, so if you could just introduce yourself to the council.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear this. My name's Raul Gustezi. I'm the attorney for the applicants. My business address is 8105 Northwest 155th Street.
Just, Raul, while you're up there, and I appreciate the relationship I've developed with Raul on these matters, and explain one thing to the council, there is a quasi judicial rules of procedure which are part of the record and in the town code. It requires certain things like a disclosure of witnesses within a certain timeframe and documents within a certain timeframe. We got a document yesterday, I believe, which was an affidavit from a prior property owner. The town, through legal, has agreed to waive the timeline and to allow that to be part of the record.
Thank you.
Mr. Gustezi also didn't submit a witness list, which is required for them to have witnesses, but he called and said that he did have one witness, I think it's Brad McBride.
That's it.
So the town is going to waive its ability to enable him to have his one witness, Brad McBride, so we're amenable to the request, so I just wanted to make that for the record. And I assume that was it, correct?
That's it.
Okay, wonderful. So at this point, what we're going to do is we're going to turn it over to Jeff Cadem, who will introduce the item into the record and give a brief presentation. Council will be able to ask Mr. Cadem's questions, then it will be over to you, Raul, to make your presentation and to call up your witness.
Okay, thank you, Keith. This is an appeal from administrative determination of the town administrator denying a claim to be, to receive relief for an existing barn that is not in compliance with setback requirements. The specific provision in the code is 15570B. I'll read the whole thing. It's the intent of this section to provide relief for plots or portions thereof that are no longer farms because of an amendment to Florida statutes that became effective on July 1, 2013. Any non-residential building or structure on a non-commercial farm that continues to be used exclusively for agricultural and related purposes shall continue to enjoy relief from Section 005-80, which is permits required and expiration of permits and development orders, and regulations governing plot coverage, height, and setbacks, subject to the terms of a further section, without the need to apply for a special exception if, and then there are three requirements. And the special exception refers to the ability of a non-commercial farm owner to ask for relief from a zoning requirement if the zoning requirement substantially interferes with their non-commercial farming of the property. Those conditions are, if the building or structure was constructed pursuant to a town farm certification and/or Florida statute 60450 prior to July 1, 2013, and the town inspects the building or structure and determines that it has sufficient structural integrity so as not to constitute a threat to life, safety, and property, and that the property owner fully complies with the requirements of subsections C and D, which have to do with application submittal and documentation to be recorded. application submittal and documentation to be recorded in the public records, acknowledging that the relief will expire in September fifteenth, twenty thirty-five unless other things happen first, such as discontinuance for a period of sixty days or conversion of the building or structure to a non-agricultural use or the cessation of agricultural use on the property. The administrator on February fourteenth, twenty nineteen, issued his determination, which is that the application and accompanying documents did not meet the requirements to grant relief under the section I just read. It goes on to state that that section was intended to provide relief for plots or portions thereof that are no longer classified as farms because of an amendment to Florida statutes which became effective on July first, twenty thirteen. And as a prerequisite for relief, that section requires that the structure must have been built prior to July first, twenty thirteen, on a parcel that was designated as a farm at the time the structure was constructed. The designation can be from the town pursuant to a town farm certification or by the county property appraiser pursuant to an agricultural exemption. Structures built without permits on parcels that were not designated as farms at the time they were built were constructed illegally, and there was no relief available under the town's code or under state law. For structures built prior to the town's incorporation, the only option is for the parcel to have had an agricultural exemption at the time the structure was built. Considering that the barn was built in nineteen ninety-nine, prior to the town's incorporation, and the property did not have an agricultural exemption at the time it was constructed, your application and request for relief is denied. And just briefly, I think it would be helpful as background, there have been so many changes in the farm-related statutes and the town's code over the years, that a quick summary and kind of chronology of those changes might be helpful to get to where we were today, to where we are today. The Right to Farm Act, which is eight twenty-three fourteen Florida statutes, was originally enacted in the seventies and amended over time. One of the things it did, it was it defined the term farm, farm operation and farm product. And the intent of the Right to Farm Act was to protect farm operations that had been established for a certain amount of time from nuisance claims under certain conditions. And for reference, the definition of a farm in the Right to Farm Act is the land, buildings, support facilities, machinery, and other appurtenances used in the production of farm or aquaculture products, production being a key term. Farm product means any plant or animal useful to humans and includes but is not limited to any product derived therefrom. So it's the, the production of farm products. That can include livestock that produce milk, eggs, or other products. It includes plants, and it includes, as was later determined, boarding of horses and commercial equestrian operations, breeding of horses, breeding of any livestock. Around the same, around nineteen ninety-eight, six oh four fifty was enacted, and six oh four fifty is the one that caused all the excitement and essentially is why we're here today. And what it did was it exempted non-residential farm buildings from the Florida Building Code and any local building codes. And they define non-residential farm building as any non-residential building or structure located on a farm not used as a dwelling. It relied on the Right to Farm Act, eight twenty-three fourteen, for the definition of a farm. At this point in time, the Broward County Code was silent to this matter. At the time of six oh four fifty, local governments really struggled with this because the statute did not define, it treated farms with a broad brush, let's say. And a lot of local governments tried to figure out what to do with this. And so some of them created their own process for determining what a farm is, and others relied on the ag exemption from the property appraiser. Okay? At that time, a lot of folks felt like they could do whatever they wanted to do, build a structure that they considered a farm structure, you know, anywhere they wanted, without permits. And that really wasn't the case because it did have to be a farm as defined, and just because you have a greenhouse or just because you have a barn didn't make it a farm and therefore a farm building. Also, there needs to be some, some process through the local government with jurisdiction to provide that exemption, to say, yeah, this is correct. So there was a lot of misinformation that went around. I remember a lot of people saying, oh, well, if it's a pole barn, it doesn't matter. And there were all sorts of distinctions going around. In the year two thousand, the Right to Farm Act was amended again, and this time it preempted local governments from regulating farm activities on land with an agricultural property tax classification. And basically what it did was say that duplication of regulations is not permitted. So you can't regulate farm operations, not location of buildings and zoning setbacks and that type of thing, even though that was struggled with for some time, and there was a lot of, again, misinformation being passed around, oh, we don't have to comply with zoning. But it was intended to make sure that certain provisions, like the limits on the number of animals, livestock on a farm, weren't arbitrarily imposed or imposed for any reason by any locality other than best management practices at the state level or other level. So the idea was to keep local governments and counties out of regulating farm operations themselves. The town code kindly, finally caught up with ordinance two thousand three dash eight. It was an extensive series of amendments to the zoning code to comply with the nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand statutory changes that I just mentioned. It defined farm as an ag-exempt property, and we'll use that shorthand throughout to refer to Florida statute one ninety-three, four sixty-one, classification of agricultural exempt by the property appraiser. So it defined a farm as either ag-exempt or pursuant to a town determination. It deregulated the regulations of structures, animals, et cetera, on farms. It created an administrative farm claim determination process for those that didn't have an agricultural exemption. And it provided that parcels with a town farm determination could enjoy the same permit exemptions as ag-exempt properties. There was nothing in the code that grandfathered existing structures. It was, it was prospective. So if you had a farm, town farm determination, you had the ability to, to number one, be exempt from the Florida Building Code because you were a farm, but also it created a special exception process. So if you were, if you had a town farm certificate and you wanted to construct an agricultural building or structure, but you didn't, you didn't feel that you could comply with the zoning requirements for any number of things, setbacks, plot coverage, height, without limiting your farm operation, your ability to farm, you could apply for this special exception. So it wasn't an automatic, you still had to apply. And again, there was nothing in the ordinance that talked about grandfathering. Ordinance two thousand five dash oh five was the adoption of our own town code. There were little changes made here and there. In two thousand eleven, six oh four fifty was amended again. It exempted farm fences from the building code, and it exempted all non-residential farm buildings from county or municipal codes, period, except for flood regulations. So now, this was in two thousand eleven, Florida statutes is saying farm fences and farm, non-residential farm buildings do not have to comply with zoning regulations. It wasn't qualified, it didn't have to. In two thousand twelve, six oh four fifty was amended again, this time to exempt farm signs from building codes and local ordinances. In two thousand thirteen, it was again amended. This time, it limited the non-residential farm building and structure and sign code exemption to lands classified as ag-exempt only by the property appraiser, or which would qualify for same. So when in Section one fifty-five seventy, we talked about that July first, twenty thirteen date, that's, that's the Florida statute that we were, amendment that we were referring to. So again, it limited, it limited those exemptions from zoning regulations and the building code to lands that had a Broward County property appraiser ag exemption. The town's code started catching up in two thousand fifteen. There were a series of three ordinances that the town adopted in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen. Two thousand fifteen oh one repealed the administrative farm claim determination process and replaced it with a non-commercial farm special exception. So there were no more town farm determinations. It grandfathered non-residential farm buildings and structures that had a town farm certification or once had an ag exemption. Under that provision at that time, the McBride barn would have been grandfathered. To be grandfathered, the property owner had to execute legal documents by June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, or you lost the grandfathering, and we do not have record of that. Even if the property owner had complied, the grandfathering would have been void upon the change in ownership because the McBrides didn't purchase the property until two thousand Ordinance two thousand fifteen oh two eliminated the references to Town Southwest Ranches farm designations throughout the code. It inserted references throughout the code, the zoning regulations, to non-commercial farm special exception process, the process in which a non-commercial farmer could ask the council, or in some cases, the town administrator, depending on the extent of the deviation, for a special exception relief for setback plot coverage and height standards if it prevented the farming of the property. And it updated Section fifteen eighty, which deals with farms, to change the wording from non-commercial, I'm sorry, change the wording to non-commercial, non-residential farm building. Again, all of this was geared towards trying to help out those that didn't have ag exemptions and those whose town farm certificates were useless at that point because of the change in state law. Finally, ordinance two thousand fifteen oh six clarified the intent of existing structures in one fifty-five seventy. It allowed the transfer of a non-commercial farm special exception, which the previous ordinance didn't. That grandfathering expired when the property changed hands. So it allowed the transfer of non-commercial farm special, excuse me, the transferring of a non-commercial farm special exception and grandfathering of existing farm buildings to subsequent property owners, provided that that benefit of relief would terminate in two thousand thirty-five if the ag use didn't first change to another use or cease altogether. It stipulated that the existing building had to be built pursuant to a town farm certification, whereas previously, the language, the language in the ordinance said you had to have a farm determination from the town. This one said the building had to have been constructed pursuant to one. So that change in language was very telling because it was more in line with the history of the town's ordinances, which never provided for retroactive grandfathering because you, for a structure built prior to your town farm certificate, only structures built after you had that town farm certificate. It also deleted the compliance date for submitting documents, so that, that June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen date to submit your sort of registration for your grandfathering and execute deed restrictions, acknowledging the restrictions and whatnot, that was eliminated. We added an inspection requirement, and we also added some language exempting non-commercial farms from landscape requirements that conflicted with their farming. We also cleaned up a lot of language that could have been better in ordinance two thousand fifteen, including some language that still wasn't consistent with the two thousand thirteen changes to six oh five fifty. So that brings us to where we are today. The administrator is required to enforce and administer that section on existing structures, one fifty-five seventy, as it reads. And it reads that you had to have built that structure pursuant to that farm designation from the town or send prior to that, an ag exemption from the county property appraiser. And I believe that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Jeff, I was negligent in forgetting to ask you for your credentials for the record as an expert.
Sure. I've been the town planner or assistant town planner since two thousand one, and I have participated or been the primary drafter of the majority of the farm-related ordinances that we have, and I've been a planner, municipal planner for over twenty-five years.
Thank you. Mr. Gustezi, will you certify your belief that Jeff is a expert in the field of planning?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. What we'll do at this time, and I'll call you up in one second, we're gonna turn it to the council to ask the council if it has any questions of Jeff, then I'm gonna have you ask questions of Jeff. For the council, before we do so, for Jennings disclosures, has anyone had any ex parte communication concerning this matter?
No.
No.
What was the question?
Has anyone spoken to anyone outside of this meeting concerning this matter?
No.
Okay, thanks. All right, does any council member have any questions of Jeff?
I have one, if I may. In nineteen ninety-nine, was it six oh four point something?
Six oh four fifty in nineteen ninety-eight.
Does that allow residents to build structures violate zoning laws?
No, it did not. No, it strictly pertained to the requirement to obtain a building permit.
Any other?
Yeah.
Counselor Fisickell?
Back in that time, I built a barn. There was no specifications. In other words, nobody could tell me what I was supposed to use. When I built the barn, I used two-by-twelves just to make sure, because you can't get anything bigger. But there was nothing to give us, to tell us what we could do.
That's correct. For the record, Councilmember Fisickell, you're correct. There was nothing in six oh four point fifty, as Jeff testified to, that required you to get a building permit. The issue is that of zoning and where you would have to put your barn, not what you would use to build a barn. So it's based on location. Any other council member have any questions of Jeff?
The farm exemption, from the town. If it was given prior to this date and nothing was done with it, it just sat dormant, is that still valid anymore? Or?
So to make sure I understand your question, if somebody was issued a town farm certificate and never did anything with it, is it still valid today?
Yes.
Because of the change in six oh four fifty, it is not.
Okay.
Jeff, I have a question for you. I recall in the emails that I've been seeing going back and forth that there's some question of where the barn actually is situated on the property, and I believe that there's some wash racks in question and, you know, things to maintain the animals. Are they part of the barn technically, or does the barn start at the four walls?
I'm not really, I'm not familiar with the specifics of it, so I'm not really in a good position to answer your questions. My, my role here is, as it pertains to the ordinances, but I'm not, I'm not very well familiar with the conditions on the property.
Okay, well, let me rephrase it then. Is the barn defined as the four- Is the barn defined as the four walls, or five walls, or however it's laid out, or does it, would it include these ancillary-type fixtures that are attached to the barn, to the building?
Again, I, I don't feel like I can answer that question accurately without knowing more.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Gusezi, you have any questions of Jeff?
Yes, I do. All right, Mr. Kadamz, so I just want to be clear on your testimony. And I want to understand it. Your bottom line is, and I'll quote from the letter from Mr. Burns. If you have it, it's exhibit E22, it's exhibit E22, our appeal, and it's the last sentence, essentially, "For structures built prior to the Townsend Corporation, the only option for the parcel owner, for the parcel to have an ag exemption at the time the structure was built." So, anyone in this town, I just want to understand it, anyone in this town that has one, a barn that did not have an ag exemption, they're out. That barn has to be torn down if it encroaches in any way, shape, or form. That's, is that the town's position?
If it was built prior to receiving a town farm certification, then it was not, and it did not have an ag exemption from the county property appraiser at the time it was built, that would be the town's determination, yes.
Right, and there is nothing they can do. They can't turn the clock back, there's no exception in your statute, there's no exemption in your statute, there's no way for them to legalize that barn in any way, and they have to tear it down.
The only option that I'm aware of, and, and to be honest, I might have to ask the town attorney a question about this, is potentially a variance, a zoning variance. But we do have limitations on zoning variances, and I, off the top of my head, I don't know if any one of those limitations would preclude an application for variance.
Other than the McBride's barn, has the town taken this position with any other barn?
I can't answer that question, because I'm not, I don't, I don't review these, these requests.
All right, for the record, I just want to make sure that, just so I don't eat up a lot of time here, I, Mr. Polikoff?
Sure.
From what I understand, the town's position is the only reason this is being denied is because for structures built prior to the Townsend Corporation, the only option is for the parcel to have an exemption at the time the structure was built. There's no, nothing wrong with the application as far as you're aware. In other words, he submitted all the documents, all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed. I just want to make sure that that doesn't come up as an issue later.
I want to make sure we're saying the same thing.
All right.
It was legally allowed to be built without a permit. We, we agree on that, correct? It was allowed to be constructed without a permit under 604.50.
Right.
That's the position being taken, correct?
Of course, yes.
So the town's position is that they were not allowed to violate zoning when it was built in 1999, and as a result of that, because they didn't have ag classification on their property then, and they didn't have a farm certification at the time it was built because the town wasn't in existence, that there is nothing in the town's current code that would allow this barn to be grandfathered in.
All right, but I just want to make sure there's no problem with the application, other than, in other words, they didn't sign it right, they didn't date it correctly.
You mean the application they submitted to the town?
Exactly. Right, okay. All right, I'd like you to turn to, and it's page H1 of 3, in our, in our appeal packet. Do you have that before you?
Can you say that again, please?
Sorry, I've had a very long day.
Me too.
Page H1 of 3, in the appeal packet. It's pretty much towards the end.
Page 186 of the agenda, for those. Yes, I have it.
All right. It's your town, it's the town council memorandum? That's a document that you authored back in October 2014?
Correct.
All right. And let's go through that, that's basically, that's basically the legislative history of 155070, correct?
This one was, I believe this was the most, let me double check.
Now, this is an analysis of 604.50. I, I don't know if you intentionally changed the statute, this is about 604.50.
This is where you're creating a non-commercial farm, use classification and use restrictions, and it's an ordinance amending the land code to establish procedures for granting zone, zoning relief to non-commercial farms, is that correct?
Based upon the amendments to Florida statute 604.50.
All right, look, I, I just wanted you to read.
Yeah, I think that it wasn't the memo for the latest of the town's farm ordinances, but it was, but it was one of those. Remember, there was a group of them.
All right, so, work with me here. I want to go through the, through your memo. I'm not going to go line by line, but I'm going to point out some things to you, and then we'll go from there, but there's a reason why I'm going to this memo first. Now, and let's go to background. In July, and this is, this is what you wrote and submitted to the council. "In July 2013, the Florida legislature narrowed the definition of farm to exclude agricultural operations that do not have an agricultural property tax exemption from the county property appraiser. The effect of this change in state law is that many agricultural properties in Southwest ranches no longer qualify as farms. The legislator, legislature made no provision for grandfathering non-residential farm structures that were built legally under state zoning preemption for farms, yet are now classified as farms and no longer exempt from zoning." These are, the, the purpose of 155070 was to grandfather. I mean, that is the driving force behind 155070. Would you agree with me?
To grandfather those that were built legally under the state zoning preemption
As a result of that, many agricultural properties have structures that are illegal because they do not comply with more, one or more of the town zoning regs. Is that correct?
That's how it reads.
Right. And then what you did was you came up with two ways, two, two essential parts to your code. One is for people that wanted to build new ones, and then one was for grandfathering, and specifically down towards the end of the next page, I'm not sure what page it is on your agenda. "The second ordinance also provides a grandfathering procedure for agricultural structures that were not built in compliance with zoning regulations." In other words, you built a structure, you stressed earlier that the big problem here was that they weren't built with proper zoning regulations. And this, the reason for this statutory scheme was grandfathering those in. Would you agree with me?
I'm sorry, can you repeat, please?
Sure, very simple. Let's, let's just, let's just read it. "The second ordinance also provides a grandfathering procedure for agricultural structures that were not built in compliance with zoning regulations."
I, I heard all that, I just, you had, you had summarized it, and I wanted you to repeat your summary, your question.
You seemed, you seemed earlier in your testimony to specifically point out that 60450 and that statutory scheme that you were talking about earlier was only for building code issues, but didn't apply for zoning restrictions, or violation of zoning restrictions. And you came up with this statute for that specific purpose, to alleviate these people who had a barn that violated zoning restrictions, for example, a setback.
Just for clarification, we'll, Jeff testified to, and he can retestify to, the fact that the 604.50 was amended in one year to allow zoning laws to be violated.
I understand.
So your question's a little bit general.
That would be your position, I'm not necessarily agreeing with it. All I'm asking, gentlemen, is.
I'm happy to answer your question now that I understand it.
Sure.
This would apply to properties that either had a town farm special exception, or were built under 60450, as Keith just referenced, between 2011 and 2013. Because in 2011, there was a categorical exemption for farms, as far as zoning was concerned.
Okay, would you show me where it says that in your, in your memo? Because I don't see a single date there of 2011, 2013. This is written in 2014, so I don't see any of that in your memo.
Okay, but you're asking me, you're asking me what was intended, and I'm telling you.
All right, so that's what was intended, it's just not in here. I just want to make sure. All right. Then, it says, "The grandfathering will expire under the same conditions that would cause a special exception to expire. Both special exceptions for new ag structures and the grandfathering provisions for existing structures require that the property owner execute and record a deed restriction that acknowledges the terms and conditions." So, back to grandfathering. And it, the memo and the statute talk about a future date, but, and I believe that date is 2035, if I'm not mistaken. So it, it has a specific time period for expiring, but let's go back. I'm trying to find out how far back we go. I don't see that here anywhere. All I see is grandfather. Is there a limitation on grandfathering here?
This is a summary, this is a summary of what the ordinance did, and you read the actual ordinance provision, and you will find that information.
We'll go to the statute in a minute, but it definitely is not in the summary, in, in the memo. Correct?
I'm, you're correct, yeah.
All right, now, please turn.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. So, I just left a moment ago to use the restroom, and I want to disclose that Mr. McBride followed me in to let me know that we have it all wrong. He appreciates my support, which I think he said twice, and told me on the way out the door that we just don't understand. So, just wanted to make that clear. I don't know if that's a disclosure I had to make, but I figured.
It is a disclosure, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gusezi, if you could continue.
All right. Agricultural uses. You would agree that this is, there's no issue as far as you are aware, maybe you haven't been out to the farm, but as far as you are aware, as, there's, this is being, this has an agricultural use?
Definition of agriculture would have to come into play for that.
Do you think it doesn't meet the definition?
Off the top of my head.
I'll read it to you, if you want, I have it in front of me.
Which, where are you reading it from?
I'm not trying to be tricky, I'm reading from agricultural uses, I'm reading on page, on exhibit I, 1 of 5.
Okay.
I'm, I'm really not trying to be tricky, I was just trying to move along. "The term agricultural uses means farms, the cultivation of crops, groves, thoroughbred, and pleasure horse ranches, including horse boarding, private game preserves, fish breeding areas, tree and plant nurseries, cattle ranches, and similar activities."
Okay.
Do you have any reason to believe that, and I just want to make sure that it's not being denied because of that? And I want to move on.
The way that this term reads, and the reason I was asking you is because there are different definitions of agriculture depending upon what body, what, what document we're talking about. So we need to be clear. This definition is in the code, and I don't know what the McBrides do with their barn right now.
That's all you had to tell me?
I don't know.
Don't know is a perfectly acceptable answer. All right, now, let's move on to the very next page. You would agree with me, and I want to go to the definition of non-commercial farm, because this is very, this part is very important. Non-commercial farm, the definition in the code. "The term 'non-commercial farm' means the use of a property for bona fide agricultural purposes that fails to meet the requirements of 193-461." That's the ag exempt, correct? As may be amended from time to time. So, to be a non-commercial farm, the very definition is someone who doesn't have an ag exemption. Is that correct?
Yes.
Then, let's go to the very next page, where it talks about farms, 015-080. "Any property owner that erected a non-residential farm building or roofed farm structure as of July 1st, 2013, which is not in accordance with 60450, meaning they don't have an ag exemption, as may be amended, or which no longer meets the legal requirements of 60450, as may be amended, is required to comply with the procedures of 155070." So, if you don't meet 60450, because you don't have a farm exemption, an ag, farm exemption, then you've got to come in and apply pursuant to 155070. Is that correct?
If it was a non-residential farm building or roofed farm structure, yes.
Erected, erected as of July 1st, 2013.
Correct, but what key is, is the two terms, non-residential farm building or roofed farm structure. Both of those link back to the requirement that it was a farm in the first place, which this was not.
This has been a farm for 20-plus years. It's been a farm for 20-plus years. It had farm certification, there's an affidavit in the record that she was using it before them, and they've been using it the whole time as a farm. Why, I don't understand why you're saying it's not a farm.
It was not a farm, we don't have documentation that it was actually a farm. We know there was a barn there, we know when it was built, we know they used it for horses. We don't know that it was actually a commercial equestrian endeavor, which would be required to make it a farm. Furthermore, we don't have any record of, as we talked about earlier, town ag exemption that would have classified it as a farm at that time when the structure was built.
Have you reviewed? Yeah, sorry. Have you reviewed the affidavit of George, of the prior owner, George Garcia Montes?
Briefly, yes.
All right. That, do you accept that affidavit is true? Well, let's take a step back. Do you dispute the affidavit? In other words, what it says?
I believe that it says it was constructed in 1999. My review of Aerials doesn't really show it there till 2001. Other than that, I don't recall the specifics. If you want to put it in front of me and ask me something specific, I'd be happy to answer.
Can I hand it to him?
We'll go through it real quick.
Paragraph 6. Well, let's start at paragraph 2. "My wife and I previously owned the farm located at, which is the subject of this hearing, 13851 Palomino, from October 12, 98, until May 30, 17." They say in their affidavit that it was built in 99. I, I understand you, you beg to differ with that, that it was built in 2001, and they say in paragraph 6, "We have always used the farm for an ag purpose, i.e. for the stabilizing of horses." On May 8, they went and got a, because of what Mayor Mecafink did, they went and got a farm certificate, and they got their farm, they applied for it, and then they got it on September 24, 2004. And they also say that they, that these structures have been there for many years. To reiterate, it was built in 99. And I'm trying to summarize and move on, not to keep everybody. Do you have anything to dispute that it hasn't been used as a farm since 1999?
What I, what I see is that they state they erected a pole barn. I would disagree with that characterization, that is a full-fledged barn. And... And it says they've always used the barn for an agricultural purpose, i.e. the stabling of horses. And like I said, um, stabling horses is not necessarily a farm. Does not specify that it was commercial boarding, for example. Secondly, this is an affidavit, but as I already testified, we needed something from a governmental entity classifying this as a farm, and that was the Broward County Property Appraiser.
Let's move on to the very next page. Existing structures, 155070B.
Do you want this back?
No, you can have it. Any non-residential building or structure on a non-commercial farm. That's important, non-commercial farm. They qualify as a non-commercial farm. They, it's someone who does a farm and doesn't have an ag exemption. So, a, any non-residential building or structure on a non-commercial farm that continues to be used exclusively for agricultural and related purposes shall continue to enjoy relief from 005-080. What is 005-080? Isn't that your zoning setback requirements?
Uh, no, that is the provision that requires permits, and it talks about the expiration of permits and development orders.
Right. And the statute goes on to say that they're also exempt from the ULDC regulations, Uniform Land Development Code regulations, correct?
Yes, it goes on to say ULDC regulations governing plot coverage, height, setbacks.
And setbacks. And the problem here is setbacks, correct? That this barn is too close in the northwest, in, yeah, the northwest corner. So the problem here is setbacks.
Yeah, I think it's the north side and the west side.
Right. So, "Any non-residential building or structure on a non-commercial farm that continues to be used exclusively for agricultural and related purposes shall continue to enjoy relief from setbacks without the need to apply for a special exception if..." And then we go down to one, two, and three, correct? That's the statutory scheme?
Yeah.
All right. Number, I don't believe two and three are an issue, correct? In other words, it's not an issue that this thing is unsafe?
I don't know that we got to that point.
Right. It wasn't denied for that reason. The, 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 the application was not denied because it's unsafe?
Correct.
All right. And then it says he had to comply with the subsections C and D. My understanding from speaking to Mr. Poliakoff before is that there's no issue with that. The only issue is number one.
Yes.
All right, now let's go to number one. Number one requires that the building or structure was constructed pursuant to a farm, town farm certification. You don't believe that was done?
Uh, we know that it wasn't done.
Okay. But then it goes on. I, I don't necessarily agree with you, but let's move on. And then it goes on and says, "And/or FS 604.50 prior to July 1st, 2013." So, "The building or structure was construction pursuant, was constructed pursuant to a town farm certification and/or Florida statute 604.50 prior to July 1st, 2013." Was this constructed pursuant to 604.50 prior to July 1st, 2013?
Uh, do you not believe that it was, no?
Why not?
Uh, going back to earlier testimony, 604.50, uh, number one, did not authorize any deviation from zoning requirements, and it required, and it allowed, uh, non-residential buildings on a farm to be constructed without a permit. And as discussed, anybody can say they're a farm, but there was no evidence produced that any governmental agency recognized them as a farm.
The owner submitted an affidavit, and you have no one here who's saying their affidavit, as far as you know, and as far as you've seen, no one has walked in here saying they weren't using this as a farm in 1999. That evidence is uncontroversial, as far as you know. Do you have any knowledge of that?
Uh, even the affidavit doesn't confirm that. It just says that they were stabling horses. Stabling your own horses is not a farm under 604.50.
Agricultural uses under your statute. The term agricultural uses means farms, the cultivation of crops, groves, thoroughbed, and pleasure horse ranches, including horse boarding. And then it goes on, private game preserves and everything else. It's an agricultural use. This thing was being used as a farm. You have no...
Okay, two points on that. Number one, that definition of agriculture, you're pulling from the town's code.
Yes.
This is referencing the Florida statutes, section 604.50. 604.50 did not rely in any way on the town's definition of agriculture. And it was not merely agricultural use that was required, it had to be a farm. And a farm actually is producing farm products, and those products I identified through examples previously.
All right, now please turn to page exhibit J, and this is your ordinance of 2000, ordinance number 2015-006. It's exhibit J, and then I'm turning to page two. Has the town measured how far this barn is? I'm sorry, you forgot what I just told you to turn to. Has the town measured how far away this barn is from the western edge and the northern, northern edge?
Uh, I believe there was a survey...
Right.
Uh, that showed those dimensions.
It's in the backup roll, so I'll just hand it to him if you want.
155070. That was enacted to protect people that had, barns, farms, I'm sorry, barns and other structures on residence, on their, on their property.
Is that a statement or a question?
It's a question. Is that statement accurate?
Per the language in 15570, it was to provide a grandfathering for relief for farm buildings and structures by definition that were constructed legally, which would have been pursuant to, number one, in compliance with the laws at the time, which would have been zoning requirements for setbacks, and were a farm, and built accordingly.
How many people, what was your estimate as to how many people needed this protection?
I don't have an estimate.
At the time, did you have an estimate?
I didn't.
Was it a lot?
I don't know.
You just enact, well, hold on. Come on. You have no clue, you just decided to bring this up because you thought it might happen? Or because it was a widespread, it could be a widespread problem?
Obviously, we knew there, the, the town was aware that there would be some property owners affected. I don't have an estimate. Perhaps council members did. I helped articulate the policy that they directed. I don't have that information.
Now, in 2004, this property got a farm certificate, correct?
Correct.
All right. And why did it get a farm certificate? What was the purpose? What did it say? What was the application for? It wasn't to grow coin?
Um, I didn't review the application.
Was the farm certification for horses?
Um, I'm going to presume that it was.
Do you have it in front of you? If you could please hand it to him.
Farm certificate?
Yes.
It's, it's part of my appeal.
I know, if you could just show him, because it would say. I don't want speculation.
All right. Let's read the certificate. "This certificate is official notification that per the authority granted by the farm ordinance number 2003-08 adopted May 8th, 2003, it has been determined that the application for farm certification on the property cited has been approved. Your site will be recorded in the records of the town of Southwest Ranch as effective as of September 24th, 04 to be referred as Garcia Montes Farm."
All right, it doesn't mention anything about horses.
It was a farm? It doesn't say it has to be, it doesn't say it has to be a farm, it says it has to be a farm.
Oh, no, I thought that was your, I thought that was your question. It, it grants the town's recognition that as of 2004, it was a farm.
Roel, if you could speak in the microphone, just because we're recording.
Forgetting.
Sorry. You could take the mic with you if you want.
Oh, good, all right. Now that I'm almost done, of course. The cert, the, the town to date has 164 certified farms or something like that?
I believe that's what the spreadsheet shows.
All right. And how many of those are going to have a problem? Or how many of those have you started to have a problem with Mr., the same as Mr. McBride?
Um, I have, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question.
Do you know of one?
Um...
Besides Mr. McBride?
I know secondhand of one, but, but I, again, I don't review these.
Thank you. Does any member of the town council have any further questions of Jeff at this time?
No.
All right. Richard, do you have any redirect that you would like to do on Jeff? In the microphone, please.
We need to get more microphone.
No, it's okay.
Just if you could reiterate regarding the two requirements under the code as referenced in the town administrator's letter, what were the only two requirements that they could do, or that they were able to get the relief sought?
Again, it was either having built pursuant to, and I think that's self-explanatory. You didn't, you didn't just have to have a farm certification, you have to have built pursuant to one. That means you had the farm certification, which then allowed you to build it in the manner you built it. And secondly, if you did not have that, and by the way, I'll say it again, the intent of that is 100% clear because the previous ordinance that the last one, 15006, corrected or revised, said you had to have one. It was then, council changed that to say it had to have been built, have been built pursuant to a town farm certification. Obviously, whether that structure was built in 99 or 2001, it preceded the issuance of this farm certificate. The other option was that Broward County Property Appraiser had recognized it as a farm by giving it an agricultural classification. Those were the two possibilities. Those were the types of structures that were grandfathered.
And then my last question is, under the existing code, right now, can the town council legally grant this?
Uh, not in my opinion.
I have no further redirect.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gostacei, at this time, we'll allow you to make your complete presentation to call your witness. Again, just for the record, state name where you live and if you've been sworn in.
Brad McBride, 13851 East Palomino Drive. Where you live? 12750 Southwest 33rd Drive, Davie, Florida. Yes, he's been sworn in. Yeah, thank you.
Sir, did you apply for relief under 155.070?
We did.
And was it denied?
It was.
Have you in any way altered that barn since you bought the home in, what year divided on?
I believe it's 2016.
Did you in any way alter the barn?
Roel, I so apologize, just get closer to the mic for both of you, because we have council that can't hear.
I'm going to do the, was it the news reporter thing where you? Can I take it out of here?
Yeah, just pull it out.
All right. I'm going to do the news reporter thing where we hand it back and forth.
Okay.
All right. All right, have you done anything to the barn? In other words, moved it or added on to it or anything like that since you bought it in 2016?
No, we have not.
Is the barn used for a bona fide agricultural purpose?
Absolutely, yes.
As of today, just today, do you have an ag exemption yet?
Uh, no, not today, but we have applied for one.
Now, do you want to continue to keep the barn where it is situated?
Absolutely, I don't think the barn should move.
Right. Now, there's something on the, on the west side. On the west side of the barn and the council, the councilman here referred to it, I forgot what it's called.
The wash rack?
The wash rack.
Right. Okay, the wash rack, are you willing to move that to the other side or another portion of the barn if necessary?
Sure, I mean, yeah. It's on the back of the barn. The wash rack is on the back of the barn.
Now, the front of the barn, let's, let's talk about this. Let me get those pictures. And I think we... Yeah. Right. I'm going to... Exactly. Palomino, your, the, the, the barn is on the northwest corner of your property, correct?
Correct.
Right. Now, the entrance to the property is south of the barn, correct?
Correct.
So you drive up into the property, and you'll eventually get to the property, to the barn in the, basically the top left corner.
That's correct, in the back of the barn.
Right. So, the, when you walk into the barn, from which side do you walk into the barn?
Well, if I'm walking into the barn from the front side, it would be from the east side of the barn. That's where the horses go in, that's the front side of the barn, from the east side.
Right. Now, the, the problem as far as the... Right. Now, the, the problem, as far as the town is concerned, is that the back of the barn is too close to the west side of the property, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so the front of the barn is on the east entrance?
That's correct, it's on the east side of the barn, that's the front entrance.
So the back of the barn and the north wall of the barn are the portions of the barn that the town is complaining about? Not, not the front of the barn?
Not the front of the barn, that's correct. They're complaining about the west side of the barn, which is the back of the barn, and the north side of the barn, which is the, the side of the barn.
Okay, so now I am gonna show you some pictures, and Keith, I was just gonna hand out the pictures just so that they can see them.
Just for the record, the town will waive the irregularity of not providing the sooner, I believe it's only photos of the barn, is that correct, Roel?
It's one photo. All right, so the front of the barn, and for the members of the council, if I may, come over here. All right, the front of the barn is right here.
That's correct, that's the, that's the east side of the barn, that's the front, front of the barn.
Okay, the west side is where this...
On the other side.
Is, is behind, directly behind that.
That's in the back of the barn.
Now, the north side of the barn is, the property line is, the property line is right here.
Yeah, the barn faces east-west, and the, the front of the barn faces to the east.
Right. And there's more than 50 feet from the, from, as far as the front line is concerned, there's more than 50.
From the front of the barn, yes, there's more than 50 feet to any easement.
And there's more than 20 feet from any easement to the side of the barn, to each side of the barn?
Yes, there's 20 feet, more than 20 feet on each side of the barn and, and, yes.
All right, one second. More, okay.
Actually, more than 25 feet.
Okay, I have no further questions unless you have...
Yeah, the council will have an opportunity to ask questions. Council, have any questions of the lay witness?
I do. I'm actually familiar with the piece of property because of the previous owner, Marlene Garcia. And Marlene always kept her horses there. That was all she kept. She didn't board any. They were her own private horses. I do have a couple of questions though, from Mr. McBride. Who lives at 1313851 East Palomino? Does anybody live there?
Yeah, I do.
You live there?
Yes, I shower there, my closet's there. So what is your definition of live there?
I mean, live there, you know, every day.
I stayed the night there last night.
Do you reside there every night?
Not every night, no, but I travel a lot as well. I pay property taxes on that. It's not my homestead, so I'm paying more property taxes than most of the people in, in the city do. So I really don't see what that has to do with whether or not I live there, as whether or not the barn is legal or not on the setback. Can you help me understand that?
It's just a question.
I'm just trying to understand your questioning.
Well, it's not a trick question, I just wanted to know if you lived there, that was all. When you bought this house, you got a survey, correct?
Yeah, I believe we did, yes. I turned that survey in for the fence there.
So your survey shows where your property lines are, correct? The survey showed then?
Yeah, our corrected survey shows that, yes. There's been, there's a problem with the survey and, and those notes were in there. That's all in the litigation that, that we're in, that's common knowledge there. There's a problem with the deed even from Keith Poliakoff's office back in 2011. Carol Colici said that there was a problem with the deeds and that, that you don't own it. There is no easement. It came from his very own office, ma'am. So, you know, we're gonna go to court over something that his own staff has told him, you guys don't own. And so they're gonna waste the town's money to go litigate something that his own office has already told him back in 2011 when it went at it before. Why didn't they tear that down then? Why didn't, if the barn was out of conformance back in 2011, why didn't you make them tear the barn down then? I don't understand it, why all of a sudden today, after the hurricane, it's becoming an issue. Now it's becoming an issue of whether or not I live there, and, you know, it's a setback. I think 155070, I think it's very clear. And I personally think that we're gonna prevail, you know, I mean, the law is going to speak for itself and, you know, I just would, you know, appreciate your consideration.
My understanding was, for anybody that didn't meet the requirements and that their fences were in illegal spots at that time, if they ever came to the town to replace a fence or do anything to have to pull a permit, that they would come into compliance with that. That was my understanding.
I understand, Ms. Schroeder, but, you know, there's a deed that's, in 1965, I sell you the property, right? And you own that property. Five years later, I can't go and deed that property to someone else after I've already given it to you. And that is exactly what we're in circuit court on right now, litigating, and it's about to be on a second. My neighbor as well, and I feel like our position's gonna be very good, and I feel like the town is gonna waste a lot of money fighting a, a bad deed that does not support your position.
You told the Sun Sentinel that you plan to file code compliance against every other barn owner in violation of the town code.
No, that was, I was a little misquoted, but bottom line is, there's 164 other people in this town that have farm certificates, that went and got these farm certificates for relief for our exact situation. And because of Mr. Katam's position, or really the town administrator, I guess, Mr. Andy Burns denying that application, then there's 163 other residents in this town that are in jeopardy because of this decision here that is not really based on the law, in our opinion.
Well, I had asked Mr. Katam's question about the farm certification, because at that time, the mayor was passing them out. I have one. And from what I'm understanding, my farm certificate is, it's useless. It just doesn't mean anything. At one time, years ago, I tried to get a farm exemption, you know, ag, ag exemption, and I was denied. I didn't fit the qualifications, I didn't have the proper paperwork, whatever it was. That was it, I tried, I did my best, I moved on, and I was actually breeding horses, and still denied. But I do have that same certificate as everybody else in the town of God when our first mayor gave them to everybody. All you had to do was ask.
You know, I, I understand what you're saying, there's a lot of injustices in this world. You know, just like you going and breeding horses and you going and applying for an agriculture exemption and being denied. That's an injustice to me.
Well, well, it was, but I didn't fill out the papers properly, I didn't do something, I couldn't prove it. You know, and, and I understood that, you know, I...
Ms. Schroeder, do you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
The drive wasn't there, I mean, I was like, well, I'll try, and, you know, if I get it, I do, and if I don't, I'd...
Well, I, I like to think that I'm a good neighbor to people. I've never had issues before. But, you know, whenever I'm, me and my family's being singled out and being, you know, on, trying to make, I mean, I look up here, I see the horses. This is an equestrian town, and yet I'm here trying to keep my barn and keep my horses, but yet there's a commercial manufacturing facility right across the street that's operating, and, you know, I just don't look at it from, you know, it's not fair and equitable, it's selective enforcement. I mean, we're the epitome, quite frankly, of Southwest Ranches being the equestrian lifestyle, having our horses and everything. We haven't had a fence for our horses, we haven't been able to board people because we haven't had a fence, and we don't have turnout. So this decision by the town to penalize us because of the hurricane has limited our ability to even get a farm certificate or an agriculture exemption. So, you know, I, I just feel like there's a lot of heartache, I feel like there's a lot of senseless wasted time and money. And I feel like the town is going to continue to spend money on this in litigation, because I'm not going anywhere. I mean, if, if it's not, if it doesn't, it's not favorable for us tonight, then, you know, there's other means and we're gonna continue down that road, and, because I'm all about principle. I, I worked very hard for our property and nothing was ever given to us, and for someone to come in and ask us to deed the property over first on the front fence, and we proved that it wasn't theirs, and then in complete retaliation, that barn has been there forever. They, they've had multiple times on that property to cite that barn in the past, and they never have until today. And I just don't understand that, and I don't think it's fair, and I think they're wasting our money. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
No, yeah, any council members have any additional questions?
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a couple. And Mr. McBride, I appreciate everything you're saying, and you've been up here at the, at the podium several times over the last several meetings, and some questions have, you've raised, you know, on all that, and I think, and I'm not sure where I heard this, if it's in, was in the newspaper, did you mention that there were a dollar figure to tear down the barn or something like that? Did you have any bids on that or anything to replace the barn?
Mr. Jablonsky, I mean, there's no way I'd even go get a quote to tear down the barn, because the barn's been there forever, and I'm not planning on tearing the barn down. I'm not gonna waste my time to go do that, so no. She might have asked me an estimate or something, I don't know, I might have said, I, I might have thrown some numbers out there, I don't know. I expect it to be at least $50,000 plus, and then if you're gonna build something back, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous.
I'm just wondering if you had a quote on it, it's just a question, sir.
Yeah, just answer.
When the, when the barn setback issue was brought up before, was it brought up before or after your lawsuit against the town was filed?
Oh, it was brought up after, and it was filed by Keith Poliakoff, and, you know, I just find that that's very unusual for town attorneys to go around filing litigation on, on clients.
You're aware that the town has clear zones and swale areas next to roads that serve as a question trail, is that correct?
Well, you know, that's interesting. First, it was an easement, and we proved it wasn't an easement. Then it was a clear zone. Let me explain to you about a clear zone. In a 25 mile an hour speed limit like we have there, a clear zone is seven to 10 feet, we're, guess what, we're seven to 10 feet. We, we meet the clear zone for a 25 mile an hour.
Asking questions.
So, and now, now after it's not a clear zone, now it's a horse trail, so it's really what position best fits the, the situation for you that day?
Your barn is a pole barn, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it's a pole barn, and it was built when...
Notice from the picture you gave me, does it have electric in it?
I believe it does, yes.
Is that permitted?
I'm not for sure.
Am I allowed to ask, Jeff, what? Jeff, is that permitted? To have electrical in a pole barn?
I don't know the answer to that, council member.
Just curious. I just happened to notice that on, on the picture.
Remember, at the time, Commissioner, or Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, at the time, when 60450 was, it was exempt from the building code. There's an issue as to whether there's an, some zoning issues with your, with your ordinance, but 60450 governed the building code. And if there was electric in there when it was built, then 60450 says you can't regulate it now. It's been changed, and the issue is, can you go back? Does the town have authority to go back, which I don't think it does, but I'm trying to answer your question as frankly as I can.
Okay, all right. Looking at the survey for a moment, this is a, this is a survey that you provided, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay.
I was about to call you, Your Honor. I was about to call you, Your Honor. Been in court too long today.
You know, the barn in the northwest corner clearly shows that it doesn't meet the setback requirements of the 50, of the 50-foot, and it also clearly shows that...
It's 48, let's be, I'd like to be more, a little bit more specific in answering your question. It is 48 feet, nine inches from the north property line. It is 47 feet, eight inches from the west right away.
That's not what this paper says.
No, you're not looking that properly.
Paper says 20... The prints are rather small and I'm old, but 28.9?
28.9 from the north property line.
Yeah, if you're...
28.9 from the north property line, for the record, from the survey, that's what his question is.
And it's 35.6 on the...
.6 from the west property line. That's in the record survey that you provided.
Hold on. Go ahead. This is Mark Gunderson, he's co-council with me on that.
Okay.
I think I can respond to your question.
I was asking Mr. McBride questions.
Well, we wanna help you out with just what the measurements and what the survey says.
Survey says what it says.
But to clarify...
I'm sorry?
There is, there is a right-of-way on the west side of the barn and on the north side of the barn, 20 feet right-of-way in both places. On the west side of the barn, the McBrides are approximately 48 feet from the right-of-way on the west side.
I'm talking about from the property line now.
Okay, from the property line, it's almost 70 feet on the west side. And from the property line on, on the north...
That's not what this, that's not what this says, and this, this is a paper you provided.
I believe you'll find that on the west side, and I'm not sure which survey you had.
The one you gave me.
I didn't give you...
I didn't, I didn't make...
One that would stand it out to us.
The survey that was previously submitted by Mr. McBride shows 35.6 on the west property line, and the survey shows 20, 28.9 on the north property line. This is your survey.
Yeah, let me respond to that. When the question arose with regard to the barn, we went out and measured it to see if the survey was accurate. And in fact, the measurement was to the wash racks. So we went back to the surveyor and we asked him to make a more detailed survey, which we did provide with our application for the setback. And that does show 48 feet, I can provide that to you, but that was submitted with our package.
What does it show for the north property line?
Yeah, that's...
North property line, about 48 feet.
48 feet. When the, so the first survey shows 28.6 on the north property line.
Now, I think that's to the...
To the barn.
To the right-of-way on the north side.
No, to your property line. This is your survey. 28.6 from your property line to the barn.
I suggest we look at the, the survey that details it.
Pull out any survey.
Okay.
It's not gonna change.
This shows the detailing of the barn's structure itself, as well as the wash racks.
Well, what is the north right-of-way, the north, excuse me, the north, from the property line to the barn on the north property line?
Approximately 48 feet, I believe.
It's not. It's 28.6. It's your survey.
No, I'm sorry, it doesn't, because, it's only to the right-of-way. If, if you'd like to...
The council member asked this specific question, just look at your survey and answer it. From the north property line, not right-of-way, not the road, from the north property line to the barn, what is the measurement?
Approximately 48 feet.
Is that what that survey shows?
I can't see it. I'm not, I'm not being coy, I mean, if you can see it...
How can we see it on ours and you not see it on yours?
I can't see it.
Can I, can I see the survey you've got there?
Show it to us, because we can just zoom in with an iPhone and blow it up. It doesn't, it doesn't. It's right here. It's so blurry, I made it. It says 28.9.
Yes, and then there's a right-of-way, there's a right-of-way, 20-foot right-of-way.
The right-of-way's not yours.
The question is...
That's correct, you asked me from the property line, it's about 48 feet, it's 28 foot to the right-of-way and 48 to the property line.
Okay, you're including the 20-foot right-of-way as your property?
No, I'm, I'm answering your question.
From, from the red line on your survey, is what the question is, to the barn, how, what is that meant? From the red line on your survey, is what the question is, to the barn, how, what is that measurement?
I think about 28 feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then there's another 20 foot to the property line.
Who owns the easement?
That was created in 1912, I believe it, the town owns it.
So then you really can't count the town's land that's the right of way into your client's property?
The only thing I, you asked me how far it is from the property line, and it is 48 feet.
No, not from the property line, that's from the easement with the town. The property of the McBride property.
I'm talking about the, to the property owner that's to the north.
Okay, okay, Russell just clarified it. He's talking from Zacco's property, he's 48 feet, not from his property. So that, that's what you're claiming. The council member is asking you, from Mr. McBride's property line, on the northern property line, how far away is the barn?
On the nor, to the north of the McBrides, there is a church property.
No, no.
That property line to the McBride's barn is about 48 feet. However, there is a 20-foot right of way.
Who owns the right of way?
It would need to be subtracted.
Okay, so Mr.-
Yes, you would subtract it.
Mr. Gostisi, just ask, because, but, but I don't even understand it. You have a survey you submitted, and the survey shows from Mr. McBride's property line to the barn, what does it show in the survey? That's what the council member's question was.
He just, he's answered you. You may not like his answer, but he's answered you.
Well-
Hold on a second.
If, if that's your answer, wow, okay.
Continue with your questions, the survey shows what it shows.
Yeah, okay, let me also put it in perspective. To the Zacco property to the west, there's almost 70 feet to the property line with Zacco. 48 feet to the right of way, another 20 foot right of way to the Zacco property line.
I don't know, I think we're making up numbers here as we're going along, I mean-
The survey you gave us.
Yeah, this is, I mean, I'm reading off of the numbers that you guys gave us. And the last time I checked, these still work, but-
Councilmember, if you could please continue with your questions, Mr. McBride.
Yeah, well, the, the other comment I want to make is regarding the red line, I'm assuming the red line is the property line that the McBrides own. Can we agree on that, or no? Okay. And it's showing that, it's showing that the one corner of the barn is 28.69, whatever it is from that property line. And then the other, the other, the other corner is 35.6. And, and then it's also showing a line of fencing on the west side, the north side, and on the south side that's way out of the property line. This is your document. The mic dead? Oh. You want to use my mic?
Just wait one second. Does that battery-
We might have a battery, she's grabbing one. The first item killed it. Just wait, roll, one second, apologize. Yeah, but they, Councilmember Jablonski has a hearing issue, so-
Mr. Vice Mayor, I concede to you that it's too close to the property. If it wasn't, we wouldn't be here. That's exactly why 155, we believe we are entitled to relief under 155070. Whether it's a couple inches or 20 feet-
Where's a couple inches at? It's 28 feet.
Well, on, on one side, on one side, it's 48 feet if you take out the wash racks. On once, on the, on the one side of the barn, on the one side, it's 40, it's-
It's showing, okay, it's showing-
47.8 feet.
All right, it's showing 35.6 feet. Okay, that's to the corner of the building, if I'm reading this correctly. Is that correct?
No, it's 48, it's 40, from the west right of way, it's 47 feet, eight inches.
But the-
And it's 48 feet, nine inches from the north property line. That's what we, that's, that's our position. It's too close to the property line, one way or the other. It is.
Yeah, but the, the point I'm trying to make is, is that it's a lot, I mean, it's not, and you have-
But, but, Mr. Jablonski-
You have fencing outside the road, in the road right of way.
Mr. Jablonski, Mario Zacco to the west of us, right, we referencing him. His barn, and I put a complaint in because it's, it's no, you're treating me over 28 feet, and you're beating me over the head over 28 feet. Mario Zacco's barn is built in the middle of the easement, in the middle. Literally, I mean, smack dab in the middle, look on Broward Property Appraisers, and yet you're talking to me about a 28-foot easement, and you're, the town is working a deal with Zacco.
We're not here right now because I asked you to come here, and that's what you're insinuating.
Yeah, but you're, you're acting like we're, you're saying that 28 feet's such a, you know, a sin whenever other people are built right on the right of way.
I'm just, I'm asking questions.
And I'm answering them.
Okay, if that's your answer. But it shows clearly that the barn is, the setbacks are not in compliance on the barn.
Well, as my attorney said earlier, the setbacks were grandfathered in that, that's our position, that's what the 155070 gives us relief from, and that's our position. I understand if you don't agree with that, but-
Okay, but you're, you're coming to us, asking us for some sort of administrative relief here, and, you know-
Yes, we are, and we're asking you for that relief, keeping in mind that not, it's not the adjacent property owners that complained, it's council that complained.
Can I jump in?
Not one single property owner in the area has a problem with where that barn is located. And no one has had a barn, with, a problem with that barn. It came up when in negotiations over the front fence, we wouldn't give in on that front fence, so then council, and he admits it, started citing them for the barn.
I have something to say on that also.
I want to jump in. Gary, may I jump in and join you a minute?
Please, rock and roll here.
I'd like to clarify a couple of things here. Had you all not sued us, because when you did sue us, that put the town in a defensive mode that we're required to look at anything else on your property that might be defective or at fault.
That's what I'm saying.
So, just because you sued us, you brought this on to yourself. We're required, because if we don't address it, we lose the opportunity. Okay? So, council, if you would clarify that that's true, what I just stated?
The council for the applicant knows doctrine of latches very well. He's also a respected attorney, so I'm sure he's discussing-
Okay, so, I would like to clarify that he didn't go after you guys, except that you all sued us and were required to go look at those things. So you brought this on yourself.
I vehemently disagree with that.
Okay.
I vehemently disagree, and I'm very capable, thank you for that, but I'd like to answer that question. Or I'll answer it as part of my statement.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
I'll answer it as part of my statement.
So let's just finish with the questions to try to get back on track.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I was, what I was saying is, the barn, according to your survey, shows that it's not in compliance, and it also, you also showed three sides of fencing that are not in compliance, that are in the road right of way. That's, I'm looking at your scat, your survey.
This is probably an improper form to use the term, but you're beating a dead horse. It's true. I don't know how else to tell you. The farm encroaches, and that's why we're here on 155070. I'm not trying to play games with you, I'm trying to be extremely candid with you. It encroaches, just like any number of farms do, any number of barns and other structures do throughout this town, including the one right next door.
Okay, but that's not the ones, those are not the ones in front of us right now, this is-
Well, yeah, yeah-
I'm just focusing on this right now.
We got here because of those. That's how all this started, and I'll put it together for you when I get to talk.
The neighbor next door has an ag tax exemption, I just want to clarify the record on that.
Okay. Anybody else got questions, comments?
He does.
I may have more.
Yep, that's okay.
We have rules for a reason. And if we don't enforce them, we might as well get rid of them. I built a barn, I had to go through permitting, and my house, that's way in the back of the property, and it really wasn't good for me to put a barn back there. I was going to have to extend out to the side, maybe do it smaller. And one of the residents out here came up with an idea and said, put it in the front. So I did. But I had to be 50 feet from the stem wall, not the overhang. I had to be 50 feet from everybody, completely clear. That was required, I had to do it. There should be no exceptions to that. We're talking animals in a barn. Nobody wants to be next to it. We all love it around us, but you don't literally want to be next to it. So the nice thing to do was to come up with the setbacks, and they've worked. This is, we're not just talking, you know, a couple of feet where someone could say, you know, let it go, it's, you're talking two feet. So, that's what I need to say.
We're going to get back on track with, it wasn't a question.
I have another que, I have one last question, and I'm looking at everything. Do your horses get out? Do they get loose? Are they running up and down Palomino, or they?
I'm sorry?
Do your horses get out?
Yeah, they've gotten out since we've had the fence down. I found them out in the middle of the road before, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That's the fence he's trying to get a permit for, that he's filing a lawsuit for.
Any other council member have any questions of Mr. McBride? Okay, seeing none, do you have any further witnesses?
One sec.
Well, no, you don't, I forgot.
I do have a question for Mr. McBride, that I forgot to bring up. Are there owls in the barn?
Yes, we have two burrowing owls that, the barn's their habitat.
Are those-
I've got pictures.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, I have no further questions.
Well, just, I'm going to follow, are there gopher tortoises too?
No, you're welcome to come out and see them. It's almost like-
It's almost like two humpback whales fitting in a sea aquarium, Mr. Poliakoff.
There are two humpback whales in there too, that's cool. It's a great barn. Alright, so, Mr. Gostisi, do you have any other additional witnesses you'd like to follow?
No, I just gonna, I want to finish my presentation.
Oh, absolutely, please.
Right, alright, look, and I wasn't going to go into all of this, but that's obviously the sentiment on this council, that he somehow brought this on himself. Let's talk about how we got here, because that's extremely important to me. I wasn't going to go into any of this stuff, but that's how it was brought up, and I, now I feel obligated to address that. And I struggled not to do it, and I counseled my client repeatedly not to go into the stuff. But now that you brought it up, Mr. Mayor, let's discuss it.
Okay.
The gentleman right across the street from, almost directly across the street from him, Mr. Calabresi, is operating a factory. You're not doing anything about it, you're not. Your son has worked there, you've got his business card. Mr. Poliakoff found himself representing the gentleman at another time. That gentleman is complaining about the fence in front of the property.
Mr. Gostisi, you know from the record, you know from the record that he was not the complainant on the fence.
He was not, but he has been in the past. He, hold on, he-
No, there were complainants behind you, Mary Gay Chapel, she'll introduce herself.
Alright. You've got to, ma'am? The gentleman is the driving force behind this, or at least, that's his perception. And the gentleman has influence with this council. We have no real high expectation of getting a completely fair hearing from some of you, not all of you, but from some of you. And it's because of that. The gentleman has a factory there going on. He needs more space to turn. He's got tractor trailers, he's supposed to be growing coral on the roof, he doesn't have a bit of coral on there. He's growing, he's making tanks, and when he was telling you before, the tanks, the fact is, on social media, members of this administration are quoted as saying he could, those fish tanks could grow humpback whales in them. That is a factory, that's what started all of this. Him and his neighbor are having a dispute when he, he has a property that in 1965, the developer conveys it to the next owner. Five years later, the developer turns around unbeknownst to the prior owner, to the then-current owner, and conveys another 30 feet to the town. That is called a wild deed. When he comes and wants to put up his fence where it was within his property line as set forth in the legal description of his, of that deed in 1965, the town denies it. And they say that he doesn't own it. The fact is, he does, and that's been demonstrated to you, and every one of you, that in 19, that, when you do the chain of title from 1965 to the present, that second deed of 30 feet is a wild deed and is invalid. The town has had to bring a cause of action to get title to it, because it doesn't have title to that property. And he wants to put his fence there. So when you say that he started all of this, it's the town that won't let him put up his fence. And now, when he can't put up his fence there, he has to file a lawsuit. How else does he put up his fence on his own property? There's no other way to do it. Or, another option that many people have done in the past, and it's probably why there are some issues in the town, is that you put it up, ah, what the heck? He went and did the right thing, and he got, tried to get a permit, and that's why he files the lawsuit. So then, when he files the lawsuit against Mr. McKay's major supporter and friend, who they won't even look into, who's got a factory, look at his website, cvisions.com, that's all it says, is he makes fish tanks. The least thing he does is grow coral, and that's the only thing that he's allowed to do. And that's the gentleman that picked the fight with my client. And, and then when my client tries to put up his fence, he has to file a lawsuit to be able to put up a fence on his own property. How he somehow brought this on himself is beyond me. And then the town attorney comes and files a complaint against him. I have been, I'm a town attorney in another town, and I have never, in my time, brought a complaint. I will call code enforcement, hey, go check this out and see, but be the actual complainant. What a coincidence, it wasn't his neighbor on the sides, neither one of his two neighbors on the sides complained, nor his neighbor to the north. So, to sit here and say that this, that this gentleman brought this on himself, that's not accurate, and it's totally unfair. Is he upset? Put yourself in his position. Put yourself where he sits, where the, one of the, the guy that employs the mayor's son. And the mayor has his business card, and the town attorney are, and the mayor are bragging on social media about the quality of the fish tanks that are being manufactured. In this town, you do not have factories. You have farms and you have homes, but you don't have factories. That place is illegal. And then, now, when they're busting his chops over, over a barn that's been there for 20 years, that's on your calendar. That's on your calendar, when that, when they're busting your, his chops over that, where he wants to put up a fence so his horses don't run wild, and at the same time, a barn across the street, a, a factory across the street is allowed to go unimpeded. Semis, noise, forklifts, dumpsters in the street, and you're busting his chops over that? Yeah, he feels aggrieved, yeah, he's aggravated, yeah, he comes across as a really difficult person, let's say. He's an A personality, just like every one of you. And every one of you were, were doing that, and this were happening to you, you'd be acting and behaving just the way he is. There isn't a single one of you up there that's a potted plant, and he isn't either. So, I don't blame him for the way he feels. I have to calm him down and tell him not to do certain things. I don't condone what apparently may have happened in the bathroom, but he's an aggrieved man, and he doesn't know what to do. He's petitioning his government, he's trying to comply with the laws, and he feels like he's being railroaded while the guy across the street is getting away with close to murder. That's not okay.
Do you have any statements about the barn? Mr. Gostisi, since you just testified, Mr. Jablonski has some questions of you.
Yeah, I have a question for you. Who calms you down?
Well, usually I have an associate whose job is to calm me down, and I am sorry-
That wasn't a real question, I'm sorry. Here, here's a que, you're saying this survey is incorrect. Is that correct? It's a question, it's a yes or no question. Is it incorrect or correct?
I don't know, sir. Just like the gentleman told, I really don't know if the survey, if that survey that you, I really don't know. If I knew, I would tell you, I would love to be able to tell you that survey is wrong for the X, Y, and Z reason, I can't.
I'm just wondering why you submitted it, because you just said a minute ago that it was incorrect. So I'm just wondering why you submitted it.
The applicant, the applicant submitted it. There are problems with the prior surveys, not as far as that barn is concerned. I'm not talking to you about that, but there are problems with the, where the front fence is and the right-of-way is concerned. Is that survey accurate as to where the barn is correct? I can't tell you 100%. I can tell you that it encroaches. I can tell you that the barn encroaches, and that's why he's coming after 155070.
For purposes of the record, Mr. McBride, and I'm sure Mr. Gostizzi will agree, has never submitted a survey to the town that shows for a fence to be put within his designated property line on the survey. He has never submitted a survey to the town showing that he wants to put a fence within his property line.
He is willing, okay.
Never.
He's, he's asking that the fences be allowed to be where they are, and he's asking for relief under the statute. That's what he's doing.
Also, for purposes of the record, calling code enforcement and telling them to check into an issue was essentially the exact same thing I did. There's no difference.
Look, I have a, look, Keith, I respect you professionally. I've tried not to attack you, and I'm going to continue to try not to attack you. But I think you're too close to the situation. That's all I'm going to say. You're not doing anything, I'm not accusing you of violating the rules of professional conduct. I'm not accusing you of doing anything unethical. I do believe you're a little bit too close to the situation. And I believe the town would be better served, would be better served by someone else sitting in your chair temporarily, just for this hearing and this situation. That's my personal opinion.
All right. I'd like to jump in here. I've lived in this town since 1992, okay? My wife previously lived here since 86. I grew up in Corrigan. I moved to Coconut Grove in 92 after Hurricane Andrew and moved up here. I've become friends with a lot of people in this town. I have business relations with none of them. I'm employed by none of them. I get no money from any of them unless it's for campaign contributions, okay? So I have no business relationship, and my friends with lots of them? Sure. How do, how did I happen to have a business card from Seovisions? I happen to be friends with him. I went to a trade show in Orlando with him, and he printed up business cards, so I had business cards to hand out, because I'm friends with him. You don't want to go to a trade show and not have a card, okay? So I just want to clear the air on that. I'm friends with a lot of people in this town, and I can call them up, go over there, see them, whatever. I have no business relationships with any of them.
Well, putting that aside, what happens to our horse trail?
Well, okay, a couple of things. I'll get back to that in a minute.
No problem.
As far as the horse trail is concerned, that's not what we're here on. Well, maybe on the side, on the side. No, no, on the side. I'm sorry. I thought you were referring to the front. I correct myself. Are you referring to the horse trail on the side?
I'm referring to the one right out front. You brought up the fence.
Okay, well, there's enough room for a horse trail there.
I don't care that there's enough. That area was designated, and there are people, there are people on that street that have been here for 40, 50 years that want their horse trail back. They might not use it, but they want it back.
We've been willing to move the fence back some, just not all the way back that they want. We've been willing to move, yes, we have, I've had the conversation three days ago with Mr. Polyakov, okay? We're willing to move the fence back some, just not as far back as you.
What's some? What's some? I want to know what some is.
I don't think we should compromise.
Can you guys come to the mic? I can't hear anything.
I'm doing it on purpose. I'm trying to have a conversation with them.
Okay.
That's why I took the microphone away.
What I can, what I can honestly.
I did it on purpose. I'm not.
What I can honestly tell you.
16 feet from the road.
Six?
16.
16 feet.
16 feet from the road.
Where's the post stand now?
I think it's 20-plus feet, 24.
Where they are right now?
From the road?
No.
Ro, what she's asking is, if he were to line up with Zacco, how many feet would it be?
According to the survey, 22.5.
Right.
Your survey.
He's willing to go back 16.
Is he willing to line up with Zacco? That's what her question is.
No, that's what we've been talking about.
So what does Zacco, how many feet?
20, in the 20s. It's like 22 feet, something like that.
So he's not willing to move it four additional feet? That's what the question.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute.
You're talking about giving up something he owns.
No one can sit here and give an opinion about, oh, you only need two feet, or you only need one. We have trail riders out here. It's a huge club. It's, it's a big club. You know, we take this away from them. We're infringing on their rights now.
But you're not taking it away from them. It doesn't belong to the town. What's, what you don't understand, it does not belong to the town. He has a deed. He has a deed that is his property.
Then why did you give us this survey?
There's nothing wrong with the survey on the front.
Disagree.
Disagree.
I got to tell you.
This survey is, goes 100% against what you're trying to tell us.
No, it does not. No, it does not.
The columns are located outside the property line, according to this survey right here. Existing columns.
Because that survey that you're looking at is not accurate, because it takes into account the wild deed, and that's what no one seems to want to understand.
So you would come and present this, which is creating a lot of confusion, rather than a current survey showing.
No, there's other surveys that we've been presenting that doesn't show that. You can't take the man's property away, and he's still willing to give you some of it back.
Ro, do you have a copy of the survey tonight that shows that he owns that property?
On my title perspective, I don't need to show you a survey. You have a deed, and you know that that deed.
He's asking for a survey.
You know that we have a deed that, that, you filed a lawsuit to get the 30 feet back.
You just testified that you have a survey showing that he owns the property, presented.
Do you have one?
No, no one has one. He can look in Mary Poppins' bag.
You filed a lawsuit to get the 30 feet back, Keith. I'm sorry, Mr. Polyakov. You filed a lawsuit to get it back. Why would you file a lawsuit to get it back if you, if he, if he doesn't own it? You filed a lawsuit. I got to answer it tomorrow.
He doesn't own it. We agree that there's a wild deed. We also agree that the Florida statute.
You're doing it based on a quiet title action.
That's right. We believe that the Florida statute says that after 40 years, 40 years of not contesting a wild deed.
So then he's got it.
That deed is no longer, that it's deeded.
So you're having to take it away from him. That's what you're having to do. I have to answer the lawsuit tomorrow.
I, I want to make sure.
Look, I conceded, I conceded that it encroaches on the left side. Without a doubt, I conceded it. On the front, there's, he's not doing anything wrong.
Just for purposes of the record, I want to make sure we're all clear here, because we've spoken as a council, but if you're going to speak on this, I'm happy to respond to it. The developer of these properties, as a condition precedent to building those homes, okay, which were started in 1968 and ended up in later on, was required by Broward County to dedicate that right-of-way. So after he built their homes, he went into Broward County and asked for a CO.
That's your opinion. I am not agreeing. I don't agree with that.
Okay, well, you're, you're giving your opinion, so I'm going to give mine. Broward County told them, sorry, your condition precedent was the deeding of that property. So then he handed them a deed. Yes, there's a wild deed, but it's our position that that wild deed is cured by the statute, because it's been 40 years.
And the bottom line is, you want to knock the man's barn down, because he won't give you another eight to 10 feet of his property. That's the bottom line, and that's why we're here. Let's call it what it is.
Excuse me, point of order. The Cinderella Clause is going to kick in here in a few minutes.
All right.
I make a motion that we extend the meeting.
Extend for what? Justice item or to finish the agenda?
How long?
Do I need to put a time on?
You know, you need to say whether it's justice item or to complete the agenda.
Complete the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second. All the questions.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
We're extending the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not hear. That's why I was, yeah.
Yeah, I got that problem too.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor McKay? Yes. All right, to get back on track, do you have any other witnesses?
No, I just want to finish my presentation. I'm almost done. All right. Please know, and I want to remind you, that my client did not construct this barn. My client bought this property with that barn on there. In 2011, Mayor McKay himself filed a complaint regarding this property, and nothing was done. It was only after we had a dispute with the front fence that the complete power of this town was thrown upon him. That's when it happened, but let's call it what it is, because he would not and will not agree to give back more of his property than the town really needs. He's willing to give away a portion of his property, so that horse trails can take place there. He's willing to do that, but because he won't totally, totally cave in, the town is denying him the relief that everybody else has gotten. He is the one man that this, that is being denied for this 155.070, as far as I know.
That information's not correct.
Okay.
All right, do you have anything further?
No.
All right. At this time, we will open it up to the public for discussion. As a point of order, and Mr. Gostizzi and I previously spoke about it, he has not presented a single expert witness in this case, under the case law of Catherine's Bay v. Fagan, 52 Southern, Southern Third, 19. There is no testimony provided to the town that would enable you to overturn Andy's decision. Despite that, we will proceed with the public comments at this time.
I, okay, for the record, I do not disagree with a single statement of that. That is not my position. I do not agree at all with what was just said, including your rendition of the Catherine's Bay case.
Okay. We'll turn it over to the public. Members of the public have two minutes to speak on this topic. Please state for your name, for the record, where you live, and if you've been sworn in. At the microphone, please.
Sorry.
Russell's got to start the time.
John Kenny, 54th Street. When I moved here.
Can you please state if you've been sworn in?
Yes. I have to mention that I had a barn like his. It blew down in Irma. My kids aren't living there anymore, so I'm not rebuilding it. I'm using the money for other things. There's a lot of us, I have five neighbors that are in the same situation as him. This is selective enforcement. It's not fair. That barn's been there 20 years. My kids partied in that barn, okay? If my barn hadn't blown down, I would expect, after opening my mouth, from somebody from code to come to my house. I really would, okay? There's a lot of people that are afraid of retaliation in this town. It's ridiculous. I want to tell Mr. Polyakov and Mayor McKay, you're doing a great job with Pembroke Pines, but this is a half a million dollars in fees close to annually we're paying Mr. Polyakov. I have no argument with that, but this, they're not going away. This is going to cost us a lot of money. You yourself, Mr. McKay, said, we're going to have more taxes if we don't put that place in. Well, guess what? Move it to 27 if you can. You got my full support if you can do that. But this is ridiculous. His neighbors don't care. Nobody cares, except the council, and it's going to raise my taxes and their taxes, and if they want to come up with their bonds, they're screwed too. This is ridiculous. It's total madness. And as for the riding trails, you all tout. If you can get the forklifts and the trucks and the garbage and shit out of them, then you can use them. But they're not really usable in most of this town, and I don't know why 16 inch, 16-foot isn't acceptable. Do you really think the people in this town have unlimited deep pockets for these kind of ridiculous lawsuits? We don't. We don't want to pay taxes for this. Give them his damn barn, please.
Thank you. Next speaker. Were you sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, state your name for the record, your address.
Carlos Perez, 13750 East Palomino Drive. I've been a resident here for over 20 years. I pulled a permit on a fence 12 years ago, that this gentleman I've heard that has claimed that I presented a fraudulent survey, which by the way, there's another lawsuit coming, which is mine. I don't speak very well, because I get emotional, but I have other people to speak for me. You approached me, wanting me to sign over to you the deed on my property, in order for me to keep my fence where it is, that you approved, the town approved, this permit, and I paid for it. I have five different surveys that state the same thing, and now I'm pushed to be, to hire an attorney to represent myself for a fence that I was approved 12 years ago? Then now you want me to take it down? That ain't going to happen. I spent $200,000 on that fence. $200,000. And I'm the guy east of him. It's not coming down, and another lawsuit's coming your way. Thank you.
Jason Curtis, 3801 Flamingo Road, Davie, Florida. I have been sworn. I'd like you all to back up just for a second. Freddie, you've known me for years. Those of you that don't know me, I worked for the property preservers office for 11 years under Lori Parrish. I've known Mr. Munoz when he was town council, when he was in town of Davie. When this barn was built, Florida statute 55373 exempted non-residential farm buildings on farms for the Florida Building Code. At the same time, Florida statute 604.50 stated that the definition for farm in the Right to Farm Act stated, farm means the land, buildings, support facilities, machinery, and other furnaces used for production of farms. Nothing in the law or definition of farm, when the bill, barn in question was built, is required to be used for commercial agriculture. Today, the exemption for the right Florida Building Code for non-residential farms on farms in Florida statute 553.73, and the definition of farm to the Right to Farm Act remains unchanged. Nothing's changed. In 2013, the bill, sorry, I got emotional because someone else did. A bill intended to strengthen the protections from the regulations of farms, in particular regulations by municipalities, was passed, as amended, drafted by Mr. Polyakov, and sponsored by Katie Edwards. Added his proposed wording, and the statute was changed to include the following definition, 60450. Bonafide agricultural purposes has the same meaning as provided in 193461, which is defined in that statute as good faith commercial agriculture of the land. This amendment effectively removed the existing protection from municipal regulation for non-commercial farms. 2015, the town amended its definition of farm to require the land must be classified agricultural pursuant to 193461. Deleted the administrative farms claim determination, and excluded every property not received the Act of Classification for agricultural purposes.
Sorry, time's up. Time's up, sorry. I didn't allow anybody extension.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Kathy Cox, 4940 Thoroughbred Lane. I live around the corner from Mr. McBride. I, I ride my horse over there, too, and I got to tell you, Mr. McBride is not any worse off than the gentleman to the east who was up here talking about his $200,000 fence. We complained when that fence went up, and nobody did a thing, and I, I just don't see why we are picking on Mr. McBride about the fence, but let us, let us look at what we're really talking about here. We're, we get diverted with the fence, but we're talking about the barn. I think it's a good thing you took the horses off the pictures up here and put the survey up there because you might as well take the horse off everything. If a farm is not defined by having horses on it, or having horses does not define a farm, what are we doing here? What makes us rural? All those people who were here tonight crabbing about the tractor supply, they should be here crabbing about this because this is what's going to ruin the ranches. What you're talking about doing tonight, tearing down this guy's barn because he's encroached on something that has offended the town attorney and the mayor. The barn doesn't bother anybody. It only bothers the powers that be because they haven't been able to coerce, intimidate, and extort this man over the fence, and I think, I think it's right that you take down all the horse stuff here because you're running us all out of here.
Julie Aiken, 3801 Flamingo Road, Davie. I'm Julie Aiken, Aiken versus Markham. I'm the person who got horses that had classification in the first place. What Jason failed to tell you because he ran out of time was that case law defines commercial agriculture as simply having a profit motive or intent to make a profit, and strong beef tuck says you do not have, is not limited to commercially profitable operations. Bonafide agricultural purposes simply means good faith, commercial agricultural use of the land. There's no requirement that, in 605.604.50, that the land receives the agricultural classification. Your ordinance is not in compliance with state law making that definition a requirement. It simply doesn't exist in state law, and in a lawsuit, you are going to lose because the law doesn't say that. It does not say that you have to be classified as agriculture to be a farm, and you can be commercial without having the agricultural classification because a lot of people, before I came along, didn't want to get in a fight with Markham and do what I did and spend $100,000, and I intended to spread it around, make sure every other person with horses got the same benefit.
Good evening. Fred Cox, 4940 Thoroughbred Lane, Southwest Ranches. First of all, Jason and Julie know more than all of us combined here, so we should really pause and understand what they're trying to tell us. Secondly, Dee, the McBrides didn't build this barn. You built your barn, you met the setbacks. They acquired and purchased the property. I would assume, as they probably assume, it met setbacks. It's hard to believe that we're here for this issue. I believe all of us have some basic virtues, but what are yours, and where are they now? Understand that the town actually offered to forgive the setback of the McBride's barn if they would drop their fence issue. Surely, that's not right. If it is right, that's extortion, and y'all might think of a legal way to do it. Y'all might think of a legal way to do it, but you can't think of an ethical way to do it. It's not ethical to tell someone, "We'll forgive your barn setback if you'll do this." That's not right. And this is what the town has become, that we're going to extort our residents, our property owners. Why do we become a town? Let's just dissolve, go back to being, you know, unincorporated broad, or possibly merged of Davie. And again, we might find a legal way to do all of this, but honestly, sincerely, it's not ethical. As McBride says, "It sure seems like, it sure looks like, it sure smells like selective enforcement." And the 40-year rule, that's real interesting. When the homeowners association in Cooper City put up a fence on the east side of Holarty, we all came in here, trail riders, said, "No fence."
Time's up, sorry.
40-year rule didn't apply then.
Jim Lasky. Anyway--
Jim, your address and if you've--
Okay. 5780 Southwest 188th Avenue. The street in front of my house is not straight. I don't know if there's any correct surveys around this town. So, I mean, I, I heard the argument about that, but what I heard first, though, was Jeff going into all the detail about how crazy and convoluted all the farm laws have been, and I believe that I think there was one year when you guys tried to get it changed, and that was a bigger screw-up. There's no reason to go after this guy. I mean, it's, it's not a big deal, and he's willing to work with you on the front side. I don't know how wide a horse trail has to be. I've ridden on some pretty damn narrow ones, but I'm sure you can come up with four, five, six feet and everybody be happy. You know, you, you don't need all that room, and he's willing to work with you, and you really ought to let this one go.
Jason Halberg, 5751 Thoroughbred Lane. For the past seven years, I've been running a three-mile track from my house down west Palomino through east Palomino, and I make a loop at Holarty there, and I do that at least twice a month, and I know that street really well, and I have to say that there are three houses that I can recall on that north side of the road that have the same fence line as the McBrides', and the, a house that is directly east of the McBrides' has a cement column, a very extensive fence that is not going to be going anywhere probably soon. So whether or not the McBrides moves, moves back, that trail is still not going to extend all the way down the road. We are spending a lot of resources, we're spending a lot of money, legal fees, a lot more than whatever commercial property may end up on, you know, in our, in our community. This is in the $50,000, $100,000 cost, and I don't know if it's in the best interest of the town to go that route or to work it out, and I just suggest that, you know, let's come up with some sort of resolution to make this all work out. Thank you.
Mr. Siegel, before you start, I would like to say something really quick. When that came up with the other wall from Mr. Perez, is that it? I just want to note for the record that there was two entities at that particular time that voted it down. One was Michelle Melgram Planning and zoning. They voted it down, and so did Mr. Polikoff. That decision was made by the council. Only them. It was not approved. They were not in favor of that wall going up. I just wanted to put that out there for the record. And now, Mr. Siegel.
Okay, thank you. Fred Siegel, President Broward County Farm Bureau, 2121 North State Road 7 in Margate. If you remember back to when you originally wrote your criteria for farm determinations because 604.50 stated land classified agricultural or an integral part of a farm operation, back then Broward County had also done a determination process for a farm because there were a lot of farms in this county that did not want to go through the process of getting the ad classification. Julie Aiken, Jason Curtis, Arthur Hurley, and myself worked with Sharon Cruz, the Assistant County Attorney, on developing a farm criteria. At one point, your town had adopted that. This town was originally started around its agricultural roots. It needs to keep those agricultural roots. Mr. McBride, from what I heard, said before, was willing to work with you a little bit, and basically put his fence, it sounded like about 16-foot back from the roadway. I don't think you need more than 16-foot for a horse trail. You know, that, I've seen a lot of horse trails that are a lot narrower. I think you need to try and work together and come up with a compromise and resolve this instead of fighting and spending a lot of money on legal fees from both sides.
Mary Gay Chapels, and I--
Your address.
5901 Southwest 160th Avenue.
And have you been sworn?
Yes. And I guess I started this snowball going downhill because I was the one as park chair that called because that was part of my responsibility to look at these areas that we need to reclaim that are our easements, and so I got called by the young man that was putting it in, Josh Dykes, and he said, "Gay, I'm supposed to put this fence back up. What do you think?" And I said, "Well, where are you?" And he told me, and I said, "Whoops." I said, "That's one of the easements that we were supposed to address when the opportunity came." I called Code, and this is where we're at now. They have made an effort, because there is some cloud on this thing, to give us enough footage, 16 feet, so that we will have a trail, and I hate to say this, but should 10, 20 years from now, and I won't be around, they may want to put a sidewalk, so we have to look somewhat to the future. You're riding on cars, and we like our grass and our open skies, but, you know, you have to look to the future, so we do need this footage. I would hope that we can resolve this tonight and allow, take the footage that he's offering, which will give us 16 feet, it's about three or four, five feet short, and not get any deeper into this because admittedly, there is a cloud, the way it was done, and we can move on. He does have those easements on either side of him, and so maybe the barn can be left alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
David Kozenski, 6411 Holarty Trails. Speaking on my personal behalf, nobody, not Sunshine Ranches. I do a lot of litigation every day of my life, and there are cases that I feel great about, and there are cases that I don't feel so great about, and, you know, this winner-take-all mentality, I think, needs to be backed off. McBrides are not really happy giving up some of their property. I think the town needs to back off on the barn, and maybe we can, everybody can just walk away.
Thank you, David. Steve Bright Cruz. Is there any further speakers after you? One final speaker, David, after you, Steve.
Steve Bright Cruz, 5120 Southwest 195th Terrace. I have been sworn. I think we all need to take a deep breath. Excellent. I wish it was a laughing matter, but it's not. We need to look back at why we're a town. We're here to promote the exact use that these folks are using this property for. Are there issues with it? Absolutely, there's issues with it, but there comes a time where you have to look at whether this is a nuisance or whether this is in alignment with what our town is all about. This is clearly in alignment with what our town is all about. I have a problem, to be honest with you, with not having a trail in the front, but I believe they've made it an offer that can make that happen. So where's the problem? Is the problem with, that the offer's not good enough? I think 16 feet is good enough. Is there really a problem with the barn that's been there for 40 years, and we wake up one day, 40 years later, and decide, "Oh, there's a big problem with it"? I, I, I don't think we can defend that. I don't think we can defend that. I think there's a time to recognize that while we had some issues and we addressed them, there's a time for compromise. This is that time, and it's time that we take that breath, sit back, and realize that this is in alignment with what our town is all about, and let's, let's find that, that compromise in the middle, and let's put this to bed.
David, final speaker.
David Sears, 5000 Southwest 201--
Have you been sworn, Russell's husband?
Yes. We should give him the property. Let him put it wherever he wants. I'm going to hire his attorneys, and I'm going to get my 50 feet back. That's what's going to happen. There's a possibility we set a precedence. I don't disagree with Mr. McBride. I like him. We talked outside last town council meeting. Seems like a good, genuine man, but it's going to set a precedence because then I'm going to come for my 50 feet. Thank you.
Seeing no final public comment, public comment closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding remarks?
No.
Mr. Gostizzi, do you have any final comments? None?
I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Mayor and Council, we will turn it over to you for final questions, deliberation. Again, to overturn Mr. Byrne's decision, the town council has to find by competent substantial evidence that, that evidence was presented to overturn the decision of the administrator.
I don't know. Who wants to go first? Gary?
I'm, you know, at this point, I'm ready to make a motion and see if it gets any traction amongst the five of us here. If you'd like to hear it, I'll jump in. You know, after hearing all of this, I, you know, I'd like to make a motion that the property owner can keep the barn as is, in the condition it is, based, based on, there's, based on six, six conditions. Okay? One, drop the lawsuit right away. Two, put the south fence back 20 feet. It's not there now. It's not a hardship. He's not tearing anything down. The southeast fence, which is still there, has not blown down. Leave it until it blows down, then move it back. The western north fence, move them to the property line if this town ever needs it, or if it needs replaced or repaired, or blows down in a hurricane. Should the barn ever need to be repaired or get blown down, or God forbid some other disaster happen, you know, to it, that it gets rebuilt with the proper setbacks and permits and zoning? And the last condition I would make in the motion is that they, they have 15 days to accept this conditional approval and 30 days to start it. If I get a second?
I'll second that.
I was going to make a friendly amendment.
I'm willing to listen.
Yeah. There, this, this survey that we were presented created probably more discussion than almost tractor supply.
Yeah.
And, you know, just presenting an inaccurate survey in my mind is not good faith, so I would add a proviso as well that they present the town with an accurate, at their cost, survey so that when their work is started and their work is finished, we have something to work with here, because if this comes back again, I'd, I'd have a different feeling about--
But they're going to use this--
I'll, I'll amend the motion to include that.
They're, they're going to use the same surveyors. They're going to get the same results.
Well, this surveyor was in '17, so I would imagine, given the grief they're getting tonight over the survey, they might find another one.
Because as people know with surveyors, if you have 20 surveyors, you're going to get 20 different results.
Wow.
I got to tell you, the, the town just had the 20-feet survey, and I'm told that they had a surveyor out there a day or two after we had a surveyor out there. So does that survey that you had out there show anything different? That's okay. The town had a surveyor go out to survey our 20 feet on the west side of their property.
I thought it was the south side. Oh, it was the west side?
It was the west side. Maybe the south side, too. I don't know, but I know the west side.
It went from south to north.
Okay, north to south is the travel.
Okay.
Okay? So I know the town had that done, but I was told that Mr. McBride had his own surveyors out there, like, the next day. I don't know if that's true or not, but--
I don't think that's accurate. From what I'm being told, as you can see, I don't think that's accurate.
Okay, all right. I stand corrected.
If, if someone's going to ask us for a survey, and we're going to do it, it may take me more than 15 days because it's a big property.
21 days. I mean--
How long?
Let me rework the motion here a minute.
But hold on one second. My point was not to make the survey contingent, the 15-days contingent on the survey. It's not part of the equation. Maybe it's when the work is finished and they put their new fence.
If I could just say, how about a new survey prior to getting the building permit for the fence?
There you go. Perfect.
Okay. All right. Let me back up, let me back up and reiterate.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay. Motion is that one, we drop, the lawsuit gets dropped. That's paramount. Two, the south fence gets put back 20 feet, and the southeast portion of the, of the fence that's still standing can stand there forever until it blows over. I mean, we're not forcing them to take that out. Their first western side is already out, so there's not a hardship created here. The west and north fence need to be moved if it's so required at some future date, and they, and I need to add this, they need to, the standard, I forgot what the--
Maintenance agreement.
The, I'm sorry?
It's just a maintenance agreement.
The maintenance agreement being acted for the west and the north side of the fence, fences, and should the barn ever need to be repaired, blown down, and I'm not talking about a loose board, I'm talking about major repairs, or, you know, or some, some, God forbid, disaster, you know, hurricane or tornado, that it be properly-- um, that it be properly built, if, if it's gonna be rebuilt. Within the setbacks and the zoning requirements. And, uh, 15 days to accept and 30 days to begin.
And the final part was a survey, uh, prior to building permit?
Right, and the survey included in the building.
You're putting anything new in, and I second.
Alright, that's the motion. It's a mouthful.
Good.
I'm not repeating it, but, uh, I'll second.
What he said.
What he said.
Wait, the one thing the motion doesn't say, in exchange for that, you will vest the barn in accordance with the town's code that it remains to 2035.
Thank you, Kelly.
Was that, was that the intent?
Yes.
Yes.
That was the intent, yeah.
2035.
Doug, I wanna make a couple of comments here, though.
20, I have a question, 2035 is a little longer than what I thought we had, uh, made arrangements for, for barns that, uh, I thought we gave like 17 years.
No, no, I'm right, it's 2035.
Is it really?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't think it was that long, but okay. Alright, go ahead, Bob.
Couple of things were brought up here, and I would appreciate the, uh, I'll, I'll wait, since they're tied up. No, we'd like their attention, so they can hear us. Thank you.
Do, if you want a five-minute recess? Okay, so, so, uh, maybe we could do this, uh, uh.
Right, so, so maybe Councilmember Hartman can finish his comments. Then before their vote, we'll take a five-minute recess. No, no, I didn't take it as such, it's just that, uh, my comments are geared towards your clients. Every time they've shown up at Town Hall, and this is before I was a council member, I remember the first time I met you is at a country, at a Sunshine Ranches meeting. All you were claiming is fraud, all you were claiming was, you, you were constantly saying bad things about the council. No, I, I recognize passion. I get pretty passionate, too. But when you start throwing around corruption left and right, you don't get a lot of votes that way. You don't get a lot of people listening to you that way. Cost you a lot in lawyers. There's a much better approach. Talk to us if you don't think you're getting anywhere with the mayor or the attorney. I'm all ears, my phone number's all over the place. Come talk to us. Don't start throwing out corruption right away. If you think this, this council is corrupt, or you think there's corrupt intent here, get in touch with the County Inspector General. That's your opportunity to take those claims somewhere. Now, this thing with Calabrese, I got my own questions about that, I've had them for years. Now I'm sitting in a place where I can ask those questions and I better get honest answers. You know, if the fence was moved for the reasons you're claiming, that, I got a problem with that. That's not right. If the fence is moved because it should be moved for the horse trail and all the rest, well, maybe you're gonna win the day here today. But the bottom line is, there are some processes to follow here, and the first thing is in a right hook. So, if you do have problems with the town again, and I'm glad your friends came out, and I'm glad people from the Farm Bureau and, uh, the Tax Appraisers Office came out, because this is no, uh, no, uh, dispersions on Jeff, but they did this for a living for a lot longer. And I, I trust their interpretations on, on the farm ordinances, they live it. But the bottom line is, if, if you feel strongly about all these other claims you're making, follow the right process, but don't come here and spew that we're all corrupt. You know what, I take, I take issue to that.
Yeah, and hit them first, I'm a girl.
Mr. Gustezi, would you like a five-minute recess? Okay, uh, Mayor, if we can, maybe we can go on, just temporarily table this item, go to the next item where they go in another room to talk for a minute, and, uh, and when they come back, uh, we'll finish this up.
Okay.
Sure, why not?
He's had six waters.
Yes.
They, they want a five-minute recess, anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, we're, we're, we're back on the record, um, if the town clerk could read the motion at hand.
I'll do my best. So the motion as I have it was a, uh, a note, and a motion to allow the property owner to keep the barn based on several conditions. There were six original conditions and an add-on. Uh, the first, uh, condition was to drop the lawsuit. The second one was to move the fence back, uh, on the south side 20 feet. Third condition was to, uh, on a, regarding the southeast fence, uh, that can remain. I don't know if there's more to that. Um, the fourth condition was to, um, on the, regarding the northwest fence, move it back to the property line, the north, uh, the north fence, the west fence, move them back to the property line. Uh, the fifth.
If needed.
If needed, sorry. And then the fifth condition, we have a few more, the fifth condition was the fence.
I don't think that, that's, that's not correct. Wait, wait, I, I, Russell, if I may clarify, 'cause I wrote it down and, and, and that was definitely not correct. And Mr. Gustezi can jump in if I'm saying anything inappropriate, inappropriate. The, the motion was, uh, by Councilmember Jablonsky, I believe it was seconded by Councilmember Schroder and had an amendment that was accepted by Councilmember Hartman. Uh, the conditions were, drop, immediately drop the lawsuit, move the south property line fence, uh, 20 feet. The southeast property fence can remain where it is until such time it ever needs to be repaired or blown down. At that point, it lines up with the south property fence. That, um, the, the west, uh, property fence, is it the west property fence?
And the north.
The west and north property fence, uh, similarly to the southeast, can, uh, can remain where they are unless they are blown down or, uh, repaired. And both of those, the owner would have to sign our standard maintenance agreement, saying that he's maintaining it. The barn can remain where it is, uh, till 2035, it's vested. Um, and then the final thing is, prior to pulling a building permit, that the property owners supply an accurate, uh, survey to the town. Timely.
Timeline, 15.
Oh, timeline, was 15 days to agree to the, um.
Stipulation.
The stipulations, uh, or, and there was another timeline.
And 30 days, 30 days to begin.
30 days to become, begun the process, which will be the submitting of the building permit. Uh, for purpose of the record, Mr. Gustezi asked me to tell the council that his client's offer, but I believe everyone heard it was 16 feet, and I believe it was Councilmember Jablonsky's, uh, counter to that was 20. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think I've articulated, Mr. Gustezi, anything to add, or was I correct?
Briefly, my client has title, arguably yes or no, to six inches from that roadway. Okay? He's willing to give to this town 16 feet of property. That's what he's willing to do. That's plenty of room for a horse trail.
They, they, they know the offer. Alright? They know the offer, his offer is 16.
Any other discussion? Call the question.
Hold on.
Hold on.
Bob, what?
I'm just thinking about the 16, 18, uh, and just wondering if we shouldn't be splitting the difference here. Because it is questionable.
So, Mr. Gustezi, the question from Councilmember Hartman is, is your client willing to accept 18 feet as a compromise?
And be done with it tonight.
It's just a simple yes or no? No. Okay?
Keep it at 20.
So we move forward with the, the roll call, so, the, Councilmember Hartman?
I'm not sure if we're finished yet.
We're finished.
No. Ladies and gentlemen, they're giving up, they're giving up 16 feet. I know it's not, I, I know this isn't orthodox.
You and I can always speak at any time thereafter, and we will bring back any other discussions without a doubt.
Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Russell, read the next item into the record, please.
Anybody still here?
Were we reading the next item? He said.
We finished public comments.
The next item, Mayor, would be, uh, board reports, act, uh, yeah.
Public comments? Yeah.
No. Board reports.
Dave, David, you're not going after your 50 feet.
Seeing no board reports, the next item on the agenda would be Councilmember Comments?
Yeah. What?
What's that?
Yeah.
Where we at? Mayor, any?
Board reports, we did public comment.
Yes, we did, and there were no board reports, we're up to Councilmember Comments, Mayor?
Any board reports? Seeing no board reports, we're done, alright? Councilmember Comments?
Before they leave.
Before they all get out the door.
Before they leave.
Hey, everybody!
Country Estates has got a barbecue this Saturday, the whole town is welcome. Country Estates Park, Griffin Road, and 190th, 12 to 4. Thank you. Um, that's all for my comments.
I'm, I'm gonna go next.
Go ahead.
Mine goes out to Sunshine Ranches. I wanna let them know that I'm absolutely appalled by the behavior of the residents in there. I've lived there for a long time, and for them to sit there and ask me to support them, and then they boo my kid when she gets up here, which was born and raised in this town. They owe her an apology. I have never done that to anybody. I've, I've taken the high road every single time, and I will respect everybody that gets up there and speaks. I'd never do that to anybody. I could lash out harder as a mom, but I'm not doing that. And most of them were Sunshine Ranches. And you want my support? That's really questionable. That's very questionable. Will she come back for another meeting? Absolutely. She has a Schroder blood in her, and she will come back with vengeance like you've never seen. I hope I've taught her to stand up for what she believes in, and what happened here tonight was totally uncalled for. There was only one other person that had been booed, and they didn't need to do that. Everybody was free to come here and vent and say their piece and everything, and it should all be respected, whether we like it or not. Whether you like it or not. So I'm letting Comcast, YouTube, whoever out there, know, I'm not gonna accept that again. And I feel I was totally wrong. Thank you.
Gary?
Yeah, I'll go, uh, I'll, I'll be brief, as quick as I can, this is, I realize I'm mostly talking for the Comcast audience or the YouTube audience at this point. Um, but there, there is actually something important I have to share with everybody. Sorry, I didn't get it in a timely manner. Um, I'm gonna try to make it before midnight, I got 10 minutes, so, uh, I'll see if I can cut that down. Um, just real quickly, the walk-run this Saturday, first time ever, over 300 participants are, uh, in this. Um, starts at 6:30, parking is at Hawks Bluff Elementary School. And then you go over and register and then, uh, complete the walk. Uh, Country Estates Barbecue, Bob, just to discuss that. Uh, the, uh, annual, 10th Annual Egg Hunt at the barn, uh, is on, uh, God, I didn't even write the date.
The 7th.
Uh, the 7th. Thank you, thank you, David. Um, is the 7th of April, from, uh, Continental Breakfast at 11:00 AM. The egg hunt starts at noon, all different ages, win a chocolate bunny, Easter bunny's supposed to be there, we don't know, he may not make it. So, we got that. Uh, Flo-Mobile on the 25th of April, 10 to 2 here at Town Hall. Volunteer Day on the 11th of April at 6:00 PM before the council meeting, uh, here. We're gonna have a little to-do, Andy, you'll talk a little more about that. Uh, we'd love to hear your voice, just to make sure you're still breathing down there. So, uh, and then the last thing I wanna go over is, uh, the, uh, a, this has basically been a work in progress, but it is our, and, and I realize this is for the YouTube crowd, uh, and anybody else that wants to, still hanging in there that wants to hear this. On bulk trash, we have a new procedure for over the limit, and I wanna go over it, and it seems to be working, it's a work in progress, and it's not the final say, but this is, uh, how it's working out. Waste Pro Trucks service the scheduled zone, and if a bulk pile is sus- suspect of being over the limit or out of compliance, such as construction debris or oversized, such as the length or size of item as per the contract, in other words, large tree stumps or 20-foot-long limbs, the driver leaves the entire pile behind with a tag explaining why the debris was not picked up. The Waste Pro Supervisor receives a copy of the tags issued that day at the end of the bulk day shift from the drivers. The supervisor begins by visiting, to visit the properties the next day to determine if the piles are, in fact, over the limit, oversized, or out of compliance, by measuring the piles and taking up to three pictures. The supervisor will then notify the general services manager, also known as Hurricane Sandy, or Sandy, sorry, um, I'm a little punchy right now. And if code items are out of compliance for, for town action. By Thursday morning, for example, uh, which would be like two days after or three days after the bulk pickup, the supervisor instructs the drivers to pick up the entire pile if determined to be in compliance, at no cost to the resident, or to pick up the entire pile if over the limit with a cost of 1750 per cubic yard over the allowed 12 yards charged for the res- uh, resident. By Friday evening, a weekly report is sent to the general services manager of all the over the limit, out of compliance, and oversized items, and we have that on a spreadsheet, as most of, most of the out of compliance or oversized items are taken care of by the resident, and none are reported, so far have been reported for this fiscal year. What this basically does is, if the driver determines and starts the ball rolling that your pile's too big, or you have multiple piles, they then tag it, and the resident has a chance to reduce the pile, so they don't get penalized. And I think that's very important, they have a day or so to pull stuff back off the pile and wait for the next bulk. Or they can, you know, just let it, let it go and be charged for it. And I think that's, uh, working out rather well, or, or if there's extra piles. So, uh, some residents put out more than one pile. I've seen that, uh, where I live. And, uh, so, so far, the, the record I've seen is five piles, so, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty massive. So, anyway, this is our bulk procedure that we're using now. Um, it, it'll probably, it could be massaged a little bit more in the future, but this is what we have, this is what we're working on, and it seems to work. So far, so good. And, um, uh, I'm out of gas. That's it.
Anyone else?
Nope, I've got nothing. No, Bob went. Keith, you're up.
Uh, no legal comments, just a clarification, there's 500, uh, runners at this point.
There's what?
There's more than 500 runner participants, walkers for us.
Oh, cool. Very good.
In this one.
Awesome, that's gonna be huge. Uh, any update on Pines's litigation?
Uh, Councilmember Schroder asked me, I think, today, I forgot the date, but the appeal is April 9th, which is, has nothing to do with the town, we're not spending money on it, we're just sitting there. Um, the court ruled that, um, CCA, that Pines does not get sovereign immunity as relates to the litigation from CCA. CCA is suing them for way more than 100 million and change. Pines took it up on an immediate appeal, because obviously they would like some sovereign immunity. As it relates to the town of Southwest Ranches, there is no sovereign immunity, 'cause we had a written contract with them, and it's a breach of contract, and breach of contract's not related to sovereign immunity. Pines sued them on a tort theory, and as a result, that's why they were claiming sovereign immunity. We believe that the court will find that sovereign immunity does not exist, uh, for their intentional actions, but it just has to go through the process, and the Court of Appeals hearing is on April 9th in West Palm Beach, um, at the Court of Appeals at, I think, 9:00 AM.
So, you still think we won't be in court this year?
Nope.
Okay.
They are appealing every single decision to delay, delay, delay. It has nothing to do with the town, we're just sitting back and watching. It has everything to do with their, everyone has to understand in this case, the Court of Appeals already has a finding, a finding of law, that Pines was obligated as a matter of law to provide CCA with water and sewer. That is a definitive case at this point, okay? So the only decision now is that because of the water and sewer, was it a factor, just one of the factors, in ICE not going forward with the facility? If the jury decides that it is a factor. If the jury decides that it is a factor and then not moving forward, no water and sewer, then it's automatic damages. So as a result of that, Pines is appealing, 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 trying to delay this as much as possible.
Keith, what's the benefit of delaying like this for them?
Kick the can.
Win.
Not have to pay for.
That's what litigators, David will tell you, that's what litigators do. They will try to make it five years, ten years, whatever they can to avoid their client having to pay damages.
Okay.
That's how you win.
Thank you, sir. Andy Byrne, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mayor. It's gonna be very brief, but at the Vice Mayor's request, just wanna remind you all that at the next council meeting on April eleventh, starting at six o'clock before the meeting, the council meeting's at seven, no six o'clock starts, seven o'clock start, but at six o'clock, we're gonna have a little reception to honor and thank our volunteer board members and those who serve the town. So just a reminder that, you know, try to get here a little bit early, so you have a little chance to interact with the board members prior to.
What's the menu?
I am not at liberty to share that yet.
Well, I want.
Because I have, I have no idea.
I don't want chicken.
Well, it's, we're not gonna have a formal dinner, you know, it's not gonna be a dinner.
You're not doing pinwheels or anything?
We'll have some finger food and some different things out. So that'll be, that'll be at six o'clock prior to the next meeting. And on that note, Mayor, it's been a very long night. That concludes my report.
Okay, very cool. All right, Russell, number twelve.
Ordinance related to the nurseries, I believe, this companion item to the LPA, which was tabled, so I believe this item.
Okay.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah, we do. A motion to table it to May twenty-third.
I make a motion to table it to May twenty-third?
At seven PM. It's gotta be a time and date.
Okay.
What time would you suggest?
Seven PM. It can be any time after that.
Do I need to read the title?
Okay. Bob made it, deseconded it, call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?[1783.18]